All right, thank you Councilmember Thompson. Uh, councilors, as we look at this, uh, been brought to my attention, we, uh, need to go into closed session for personnel matter, uh, finalize if that's okay or look for a motion to, uh...
To move here.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Harris, second, and by Councilmember Davis, uh, to go into closed session, and council will meet right across the hall. Any discussion on the motion? All right, show of hands, those in favor, closed session? All right, so we'll see you in just a bit.
...
Thank you for your patience. We will call a meeting back to order. And with that, we'll move to the approval of the agendas there. Motion, Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I understand that we've got some folks that have to leave and later on during this afternoon. Is it possible for us to amend today's work session agenda to have a brief discussion on the Community Safety Summit? And call it 5.001 so that we can dispose of that right up front?
I'm fine with it. I think the manager was prepared in his report to also update the council on that. So if you're saying that we'll go in lieu of whatever you have planned at 5:30, is that what you're saying?
I definitely wanted to do something in lieu of what was going to be a second special meeting today. But I guess I wanted us to be able to take specific action on what the expectations were so that the manager is clear.
Okay, so you want to make it an agenda item?
Yes, sir.
All right, is that a motion to do that?
Yes.
You're making a motion to approve with the exception of adding this item as 5.0...
001, just so it's the first thing.
All right. He's doing a motion to add it versus briefing. Well, we had asked the manager, just for those who, to kind of bring everybody up to date. The manager was going to brief the council and the public today on the plan, Community Safety, Public Safety meeting scheduled for April 30th. Where we're bringing in State Director and some others, just to bring everybody up to speed. Councilmember Benevente had also set up a request of a special meeting at 5:30. And he's saying that if we add it as an agenda item and I guess formal action follows or not, he wants to put it as a specific item to discuss and take action if necessary versus a briefing. All right, Councilmember here.
Okay, so we're gonna have the presentation that the city manager is going to do.
I don't know if it's a presentation or an update.
Well, the update on the very same thing. And then we're also going to get a special presentation for that after the work session meeting on the very same thing. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I didn't call it a special meeting, so maybe Councilmember Benevente can speak to what his intentions were.
So, as of right now, I don't believe that City Council has approved for a Community Safety Summit to occur on April the 30th. I think that this would be an opportunity for us to discuss that, what that looks like. And more importantly, whether or not we want to hear from Dr. Tate and get some information back before we have any sort of summit on April the 30th. So in order to sort of clean all that up and address some misunderstanding on all that, if we made it an agenda item, we can do that because typically when the city manager gives a report, we don't necessarily take action on that. So really, the only way for us to take any action would be for us to make this an agenda item.
Well, two things on that. One is this is official meeting, so we can take action on it if necessary, but I certainly see the point of that. But any other questions? Is there a second on that? Councilman Mahondros, all right, discussion. Any other questions as to adding this as 5.001, which should be beforehand? And then I think Councilmember Thompson, you wanted to see if council would entertain you moving an item up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was my council's request item. I wanted to get moved up because I have to depart.
So you want to come at the beginning of the council member request section if...
I have, I can wait until after 5.04.
Okay. All right, I'll leave that to council's pleasure. So there's a motion to approve with amendments and modifications that Councilmember Benevente laid forward, add an additional item. In addition to that item, Councilmember Thompson has asked for a friendly amendment that would include relocating 5.011 up to, what, 5.04A?
A.
Or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir?
I didn't get really the answer or the response. What the city manager is going to present us on or update us on versus the additional item from Councilmember Benevente, Mario, how are they different? That's what I was, that's what I was asking.
So maybe Mr. Hewitt can answer that question?
Well, I think Councilmember Benevente, you know, of course, there was some communication back and forth as to, there were questions about the Public Safety Summit meeting later in the month. The manager and his team were going to update us, and then Councilmember Benevente scheduled a special meeting, I guess for the purposes of council update. So I guess he's saying now they could be one and the same, depending on what level of discussion we have.
So then are we asking the city manager not to do it?
If you approve the agenda, then instead of him just giving a brief summary, it could possibly be followed by some action.
Then repeat the motion, sir.
It does take eight.
So just to reiterate, I move that we add item 5.001 to discuss the Community Safety Summit. And I'm willing to accept the friendly amendment from Councilmember Thompson to move his item up to 5.04A.
Okay, all right, it's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, second by Councilmember Mahondros. Discussion we've had, all right, council, we'll work on our machines. Look to you for action to approve with those exceptions. Who hadn't voted? Sorry. All right, council, because it requires a super majority, that motion did not amend the agenda. Six, four. I think the super majority was eight to, eight needed. And so we'll have the city manager's briefing, but that does not preclude any council directives from taking place, so. All right?
And I'm trying to understand some, also some additional verbiage that went back and forth through email. And if I'm off, tell me I'm off and I'll cease. During our last meeting, well, during our last, one of the last presentations where we had Dr. Tate here, and it was stated, because I'm just going on what I heard from Councilmember Mario, but it was stated that, or requested that there be some updates. I'm not sure if he was coming back, but some updates or maybe him coming back as we continue to move on forward. So I'm trying to understand how these are tying in and where does that fill in? Because I do know, I thought I heard, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, that there were some changes in what Councilmember Mario was stating and then what we stated at that meeting. I mean, what clarification?
I don't know that that's the level of what we were trying to get accomplished today. I think Councilmember Benevente's motivation was to get the council to make sure we're on the same page about what that meeting looks like.
Okay.
And the manager's going to cover it. So what he was saying, even prior to knowing that the manager was going to brief us on that and make sure that we were headed in the right direction, he did a special meeting request, which he's saying this may cover that. But in addition to that, he was wanting to add it as an official item, just to ensure that official direction can be given. But it's not necessarily the case. I think his concerns, based on what the manager says at this point and what questions come up and what council responses to that, will address that. He's saying it may make the meeting null and void at that point.
Okay, I understand. I'm very clear.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you.
I would still like to have my item 5.011 moved up to 5.04 Alpha. I know the first four briefings that we have are going to take some time. And I just didn't want it to be tabled to the next work session. I would like for it to be heard tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, how do we do that, ma'am attorney? Do we... Okay, so if you formulate that in a motion to approve, then we...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our motion, we approve the agenda with adding, moving item 5.011 up to item 5.04 Alpha.
All right, and this does not require a super majority because you're not adding anything, right? All right, you're just moving something from place. All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro, to Councilmember Green, all right? All right, all right, discussion. All right, council, look to you for action on this. All right, motion carries. Now, one, agenda's approved. All right, council, move to Mr. Manager. Better be a good report.
Jody, if you, we've added this item on your work session agendas. City manager reports similar to what we have is your regular scheduled, regular meetings, rather, so that we can provide council with updates. And without that, we only follow what's on the agenda. And Jody has a one-pager, I think, for the council members. And Jody has a one-pager, I think, for the council members. And she is going to cover some of the items that we have on the, thank you. Discussed for the, let's see, I don't know how many we have, I think. Yes, enough, yeah. If there are two there? We're perfect, thank you. Make sure you have enough on that side as well. And Jody, if you will.
Nope, there it is, okay. You have a one-pager overview of where we are with planning the public safety summit. Christopher Williams in the city manager's office has been the lead on planning this and supported by Brooke Redding. Right now, the event is scheduled for April 30th. This is in partnership and facilitated by Dr. Tate. One of the things he mentioned when he was here for that work session was bringing our community partners together that have a role in the collaboration of the Office of Community Safety and having a discussion to ensure that we have a wide community network to provide the services and continue on with the supportive, to support the Office of Community Safety. So that is really the purpose of this public safety summit. It is to invite our collaborative partners, our stakeholders, and some regional experts in the field to provide shared best practices in the four focus areas that are covered by the OCS, which would be violent crime prevention, youth intervention, mental health response, and homelessness. And so those are the four potential target areas of the OCS and the areas in which we've invited the various community groups locally and statewide to participate in the roundtable. We have graciously been allowed to use the Fayetteville State Student Center as a space. It's a large space that would accommodate, hopefully, everyone that wants to attend. And we'll be releasing more information to the public, of course, inviting interested residents to come in and be part of that process. And Dr. Tate will be here to facilitate that and have that conversation and lead that process throughout. The goal at the end is to sort of have a landscape analysis of what exists in the community and then where any potential gaps might be and who's willing to participate in that process and come to the table and say, yes, we have resources that we are able to provide to continue this work.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jody. Councilmember Benevente?
What sort of information, number crunching research that has been done since Dr. Tate visited with us? And then over all that time leading up to this, will we expect to get before April 30th?
They are working on the data, and some of that is being evaluated right now. It's comprehensive, and so hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that data back. But in the meantime, we can have this conversation about a broad spectrum of services that could be provided.
So just to clarify your answer, we're not expected to get any information back until April 30th?
I believe we should. I did not say we are not expected to. I said we're working on that right now, and there's about 30 days before then.
Well, I guess my biggest concern is that I don't want to be hearing about this information for the first time with all of our roundtable partners. I think that there's an opportunity for us to get with, whether it's Dr. Tate, his team, or even just some information back for us to discuss ahead of any such meeting because that will kind of inform who all is at the table. So when it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have some information come back beforehand.
If I could add a point to that. This kind of came up in an early conversation we had, that I think it would benefit us to have a meeting as a body before hosting a larger discussion, if it permits with Dr. Tate's schedule. So, you know, I would be inclined to call a special meeting if needed that's just focused on that, just to make sure that we've got all of our questions answered and ducks in a row so that we're not holding the larger meeting up. I mean, because you'll have a lot of parties here from state and national positions, so you don't want some of the questions that we could probably cover in a separate meeting then. So I'm inclined to do that if it fits in his schedule. But I do, would like to follow up on the councilman's question. Ms. Jody, I know you're working hard as you can, but there were some data points that we needed. Can that align with a special meeting being called that, to make sure that we have the benefit of that read ahead?
Yes, sir. I think there's two levels of data, and Mr. Yates might have a little bit more information on this as well. It was a large amount of raw data that we acquired from the police department and various sources, and they are, we are analyzing that right now. So I believe that we could have that data back to you. We'll double check. I don't want to promise the timeline and then not be able to deliver on that, but absolutely will. And we can also inquire with Dr. Tate if he's able to come down before then as well.
Because I know he had a conflict, is why he had to change it, right? What dates for that?
It's April 8th through the 22nd. He is unavailable and traveling. So we will ask, we will ask and make sure, and we can maybe fit that in at some point.
Mr. Yates, come on down. Because I, I think in council, you know, that was a meeting that you had the benefit of him being here, I was remote. But I do remember him saying that in order for him to make good recommendations, it was data-driven about what our specific challenges were. Mr. Yates, we're not able to put that in a, maybe a high-level piece. You know, I know that there's a lot of information, and the deeper you go into it, the harder it is. But we should know how many or what percentage calls came for mental health, what percentage came from at-risk youth violence or gun violence and some of these other pillars. How are, how are we looking on that?
So I know that Dr. Tate's team is looking at it. And we also have some internal staff working and looking at it. So I don't have a specific data, as Jody mentioned, yet. There's a number of nuances to the data. So there's a little bit of work still going on with that. If the council's desire is to have a special meeting to go over that data, we can certainly take and try to target that and try to get you some high-level analysis and some high-level, I guess, findings from that data, if you like.
Well, council, how about the week of the 23rd, 24th, which is a week before the 30th? That will give him time to get back from wherever. Should give us time to catch up on the data. The whole week? With some busy people.
And, Mr. Mayor, what we can do? With your leave, unless you want to do it now, we can check your schedules or we can get a time. We can ask staff to look at that, and we can get you that data to call a meeting. We did provide Dr. Tate with three years' worth of data. And I was also absent that meeting, but from what I've been told, Dr. Tate's analysis was focusing on which areas of OCS we should focus on first, whether it was gun violence, violence interruption, mental health, alternative response, co-response, homelessness, poverty, or what areas, based on the data, that he felt we should put in place first. So I think he has that, but it would probably be beneficial for us to have that as, as earlier meeting you're talking about as well, where we can look at the data objectively. And once we get it, since we've sent the data to Dr. Tate, I've not looked at it, but we don't mind sending it to you guys, but I just don't want to send you raw data in a data dump. But we will try to clean it up and get you something as soon as possible. But with your leave, Mayor, unless you're able to get cohesive, get everyone to agree at the moment on a particular date, we'll come up with some dates for you to look at and circulate with council and get that something out to you guys by first of tomorrow to see whose schedules work, because we've first got to talk with Dr. Tate and if he's the one of the deciding points.
All right, we go to Mayor Protim, back to councilmember Benevente, and I'll just say this. Usually, the clerk's office is good with facilitating times and dates, so didn't necessarily have to run through me, but she knows everybody. I don't know where I'm supposed to be from day to day without Jennifer's help.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I'm sitting here looking, we have a council meeting on April 22nd. Not knowing how stacked that council meeting is, I would be aptical to starting at maybe 5:00 for that special meeting. Do we think the special meeting would be more than an hour?
He's out of town to the 22nd, right?
We will check, we will confirm those dates. We will confirm those dates.
Okay.
Councilmember Benevente?
And I'm fine if Dr. Tate's not necessarily available himself at this point. I think there's just some level of information that we ought to receive so that we can digest, have some questions answered. I don't want to walk into an April 30th meeting with a bunch of partners and us be sort of getting the same time as they are, all this data. I don't think that's going to make for a great summit. So I would like for us to just say, whenever, even if, city manager Hewitt, you want to do small group meetings with just a handful of folks that are available on that Winston-Salem date and then catch up with the Winston-Salem people afterwards. Whatever can accommodate, the outcome is simply that we get some opportunity to work with staff ahead of April 30th. This is the only real goal. How, if it's Dr. Tate, I don't think that's necessary.
And y'all okay with that? All right.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, hold on before you, and I'm coming. Council, just to kind of talk about process during it. You know, I just, I was able to go to Memphis for a gun violence summit that kind of worked where there was a large room with partners. And certainly, just to make sure that I'm clear on this, there's no intent on my end or anyone I've talked to, Mayor Protim or others, to try to handpick who participates or who attends. But the table's only big enough to accommodate certain people. So, you know, we have some national people who are interested, we have some state people, and of course, the local folks who are in this space, I think, need to be there. And it would be a public meeting, that's why we wanted a larger space. So the folks that may not have been at the table, there were rows of chairs for people that could participate and add to the discussion. And then the discussion covered different areas of it, which Dr. Tate would kind of run that. So that was kind of the thought process behind it, open to any other ideas. So I don't want us to get caught in the whiz of thinking that it's not inclusive. I wanted to bring as many people to the equation as possible. There was a conversation I had today with a group that is on the invite list who helped set up these offices in Baton Rouge and in, yeah, Baton Rouge and Greensboro, Winston, Charlotte. Also, they're very familiar with working with the Bull City United and Duke Response in Durham. But anyone that you think, and Mecklenburg County has a great example. So as many people can tell us, you know, as much information as possible was the goal. So I just kind of wanted to ping you on that, to think that's how Ms. Jody and staff was kind of headed in that direction, to accommodate as many at the table, but you certainly have other attendees that'll benefit from being there. Okay, so councilmember Benevente? Motion, you said?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a question, I just have a statement that I'd like to make. And I'm pretty sure this is national news, so I'm pretty sure everybody has seen it already. But if you haven't, you know that there's been, I believe, 15 kids who were shot during the mall in Indianapolis. And there was another child that was shot, 12-years-old, in Chicago. So I guess my statement is, who on this list, who is not on this list that needs to be on this list?
Well, I think for gun violence, that was the conference focal point that I attended. Got a lot going on across this country, and we are in a fortunate position. When you talk to Memphis, who's had 86 homicides since January, you talk to some of these other communities that are really strapped with gun violence. Some of these players that are from the national are on here that I think we could benefit from. It was good to go around the table and talk about Fayetteville only had three homicides this year so far compared to 13 or 12 last year. But, you know, we want to make sure we include everybody that we need to hear from. And so you have people who've helped Philadelphia Mayor Neder and New Orleans work through some of their challenges. But we could talk more about that. I see councilmember Banks-McLaughlin has it. And any local partners that you all think would benefit from attending as well. But councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, then I'll go to Benevente.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that's a great point, councilmember Thompson. As far as bringing people at the table, you know, we have our police chiefs and different organizations, but family members, victims, should be sitting at that table, as well as our youth, those who experiencing those situations. So I would like to sit at that table or along with other family members who actually experienced it firsthand.
And I think those are great points, and how councilmember Benevente may can cover this. But he made a suggestion, just kind of in speaking about it, this doesn't have to be the one and only meeting. In fact, we suggested there may be multiple, right? That this may be the larger one that builds out the technical part of how to set up the office and how much is funded and budgets and that kind of thing. Then it needs to be a community meeting that hears from the community and some of the more grassroots organizations, that we may need multiple conversations, because you definitely want community buy-in, is what I've heard. These other communities say they did, that there are multiple meetings that people can attend and not just get information and participate. But I do think that we're on to something with all of these great ideas. And maybe the first meeting includes a certain portion, and then we've got a follow-up meeting or two once we know where our gaps are, but that's something to consider.
I didn't want to call anybody out, but I think it's important that we have some of our community leaders in our faith-based community in this meeting.
Agreed.
So I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we direct staff to bring back some information ahead of this April 30th summit. And if that requires small group meetings, then whatever is best for everyone's schedule.
All right.
Prior to April 30th.
There's a motion by councilmember Benevente. Is it the second councilmember here, or Thompson? All right, discussion on that? All right, those in favor, council, go to the machines. All right, and that was, good work, council, staff, thank you. We appreciate your hard work on that. All right, so council, we'll move to, so just for clarification, councilmember Benevente, are you good on your special meeting? Okay, so he'll, so Madam Clerk, you can notify that 5:30 meeting, I think, has been canceled. All right, moving to 5.01, Project Home Run, five-year review, Mr. Hewitt?
Mayor, we're also joined by George Bries, who was, I think, chair of the...
The legendary.
Yes, yes, yes.
The GOAT.
Thank you.
See if we can get this, so you can see it as well.
Just one second.
I'm usually used to some walk-up music, something a little more exciting. Because it wants to be dramatic. All right, thank you for inviting me today to talk about five years of Fayetteville Woodpeckers baseball. I've only been here for one of them, so some of you have had a little more interaction or involvement than I have. But I'm going to do my best to recap these five years and look forward to what we have planned moving forward. And the city has prepared this video.
Council has called this meeting to get some input from the residents on the proposed baseball stadium. This is the first of few public hearings that we intend to have on the subject of baseball.
So I am, I'm, that's right, that's good. I am Michelle Skinner, I'm the general manager of the Fayetteville Woodpeckers. Uh, for any of those that, that haven't been involved as long, just real quick overlay, um, we are the single A affiliate of the Houston Astros. Um, if you're going through the Astros organization, the guys start here, they go to Asheville, North Carolina, down to Corpus Christi, Texas, Sugar Land, Texas, and then to the Houston Astros, barring any trades to other teams. We play a hundred and thirty-two game seasons, sixty-six home games here in Fayetteville in a twelve-team Carolina league. Uh, we span up to Delmarva, Maryland, all the way down to, I think, Charleston, South Carolina. So, um, large footprint, but sixty-six games here in Fayetteville. Big number for us, official minor league attendance since we started is over eight-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand people, averaging two-hundred-and-five thousand per season. We'll have our millionth fan come through the ballpark this year, um, which we're extremely excited about. Woodpeckers in the big leagues, a lot of people, you know, say, oh, it's just minor leagues, not that big of a deal. We've had twenty-eight major leaguers play here in Fayetteville on their way up to the big leagues. Uh, pictured there, Seth Beer, recognizable name, uh, he actually got traded and debuted with the Arizona Diamondbacks. Jeremy Pena's in the middle on those photos, he was the World Series MVP in 2022, uh, started right here in Fayetteville. And then Seth Meyers in the, uh, Black Ops uniform there was the starting centerfielder for the Astros this year, made his debut last May. So, quality baseball, big-time names coming through, you just don't know it until a few years later. So, uh, you want to be there, you want to see who, who's going to be next. Off the field, the Woodpeckers team is twenty-three full-time staff members. Um, I just joined the team last March, so I've only been here about a year. Um, I'm really here because, um, Astros were looking for consistency. I was with the, my former team for twelve seasons, I want to build that consistency for Fayetteville as well. I know our team turns over quite a bit, so I'm here for a long time, so you guys better be ready for it. Um, our team members are , are members of the chamber, we're in the Kiwanis Clubs, we're, we have a little league coach, a high school lacrosse coach, so we are here and involved. The team itself, the players, turn over every year, you might only have two or three back each season, but the front office staff is here and members of our community, um, and that is valuable to us, and we want to continue to build that. Um, actually, some of you would recognize Pete Subsara's name, he was assistant GM, he left for a couple of years chasing the big leagues, went to the Washington Nationals, he actually came back this, this February, um, wanted to raise his family in Fayetteville, um, his daughter, so he and his wife moved back here, he's assistant GM, so you'll see him at the ballpark again. Uh, but we're looking to build that core, like I said. Community impact, um, our community leaders program is based on the Houston Astros Foundation program. Uh, we have four partners, uh, Waltingham Group is actually not listed on there, they are our fifth partner, so that puts us at over seventy-five thousand a year that we are giving directly back into this community. Um, that is focused on youth sports and military service members and their families. Um, outside of that, we have the classic minor league programs, uh, reading programs, Bunkers Buddies, Kids Clubs, so we do school tours, um, almost twice a week now with Cumberland County Schools in the offseason. Our mascot and the team is out at different events over a hundred each year, and we're donating to fundraisers, we're hosting things at the ballpark, and really trying to be a core, uh, member of this community. Economic impact, that's the big one, that's why we're here, right? Uh, sales taxes since 2017, when we signed that, uh, one-point-one-five million in sales tax paid, three-hundred-and-seventy to Cumberland County. We are currently working with Distinctly Fayetteville and Devon to get retroactive data, so we have better numbers on our community impact and, and downtown. Uh, we will provide quarterly data moving forward to the city council and to, um, our AAR Fund Advisory Board, so that we have quarterly impact reports, and you know how many people are coming to town for our events and our games. Uh, Placer AI reports through Cool Springs, uh, last November, so it was a twelve-month report, showed three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand visits to Segra Stadium, one-hundred-and-ninety-one of those, one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand of those were unique visitors, and an average visit time was a hundred-and-forty-one minutes. So, through those different, more sophisticated programs, we're being able to track where people are coming from, how long they're staying, um, a lot of them, you know, coming from downtown businesses to us, and then headed out to Escribo Road and those areas. So, we're getting more, like I said, more sophisticated with that data, and we'll be able to report that as well, so you can see what is going on at Segra. This year, it's our fifth anniversary, that's why we're here, right? Uh, project home run, five years, our slogan for this year is seize the Fay. Uh, we talked about it in the offseason a lot, you know, people go to Raleigh, people go to Durham, Bulls games, and a tip of the cap, they do a great job. Um, they're, they've been around thirty years. Uh, but we want people to seize the Fay, we want people to stay here in Fayetteville. So, if you look at our promo calendar this year, it's a lot more local focus. Obviously, we love the Houston Astros, um, they're the reason that we are here, but we're focusing more on Fayetteville and our baseball heritage here. So, um, second home stand, we have a Babe Ruth bobblehead giveaway, um, that's part of a baseball heritage series that we'll do. Each year, we'll do another item focusing on baseball here in Fayetteville. Um, sneak peek, Babe Ruth will be on a bicycle, because he used to ride his bicycle up and down Main Street in Fayetteville. So, unique take on that. Um, we're partnering with Distinctly Fayetteville and Arts Council for Arts in the Ball, Ballpark. Um, Brandon, who was with Hoodland, uh, he was featured at the Arts Council last year, uh, has designed jerseys with his crew from Los Angeles, so he's from Fayetteville, designing jerseys, designing giveaway hats that you'll be able to color your own, uh, art project on, and working with, you know, Symphony to get Symphony on tap there for that night, too, and just really feature all these different things that we have to offer here in this community. And then partnering with Major League Baseball and the Playball Weekend, that, purpose of that is really just to get kids involved in baseball and get them introduced to baseball. But we're going to partner with Vic, uh, Vic Blens from TikTok, anyone knows that, um, Two-Six Project, Brandon, or, um, Grant over there, and they're going to help us do a give-back at the ballpark. So, that'll be open for free to kids in the community on Playball Weekend. We've always done giveaways in the past that were, like I said, Houston-related and things, um, so this year, we'll do our first player bobblehead that's in a Woodpeckers uniform. Um, it's going to be much more focused on us and what we do. And then bringing back live music every Thursday to feature local arts again, um, and get people out at Healy's pre-game. All right, outside of Woodpeckers baseball, we still have a lot of stuff going on at Segra. A hundred-and-eighteen-thousand visitors for events over the years. Um, NCAA baseball, obviously, we have Campbell and ECU Charlotte, UNC Charlotte, sorry, sorry, I'm from Indiana. UNC Charlotte, um, tomorrow night, but we had, um, UNC-ECU a couple of weeks ago, and that was over six-thousand people at the ballpark. So, finding those events that are big impact items for downtown and for our community is big for us. Our new, uh, special events manager, Russell Waldom, joined us, and his goal is to start next year an NCAA tournament. So we'll have a full weekend of baseball. Teams coming from the north that don't want to play in the snow, we'll get them to play down here. Um, still will be involved with UNC and ECU moving forward. Uh, USA Baseball, we'll be here twice this summer, we had them last year on the Fourth of July, they'll be back for the Fourth of July this year, and then one game before that. Um, we're doing high school baseball, Jackie Robinson Showcase, hosting special events on the nonprofit world, the nine-eleven memorial stair climb is an annual event for us, the Walked-In Alzheimer's. Um, we continue to try to think of new things, uh, fresh things, but Pectober Fest will be back, that's our beer festival, in, uh, in September, October, with movie nights, holiday lights. Uh, I will say, in holiday lights, we are investing about a hundred thousand a year over the next three years to improve the lights and make it more interactive, more photo opportunities, just so there's another thing downtown to draw people in and get them here to enjoy other businesses in the area. Continuing to post, uh, host coffee clubs, City View Awards luncheons, get involved with the business community, and then we have private rentals, reunions, retirements, all of that, year-round. So we have people in and out of the stadium all the time. Um, actually, Saturday, we had over fifty-three-hundred people from Epicenter Church for their Easter egg hunt, hunting eggs on the, the field. So, a free event to the community, uh, it was a lot of fun, inflatables everywhere, uh, candy still everywhere, but we're cleaning up for opening day. Uh, city events, we can have up to fifteen dates a year through the city, and, you know, we've been pretty consistent on some of those. Last year, we had the police versus fire softball game, I know that there's talk that that happening again, so hoping to continue to build on those, had a movie night. Um, but really, we want to look at how we can be more involved as a facility when Dogwood Festival's happening, when, uh, Dickens Holiday is kicking off and things like that. We, we are a resource and we are a hub, and these are city events, but as kind of the event managers of the ballpark, we want to be part of that and want to continue those conversations of how can we make the facility open to everyone. We have a thirty-year agreement, so we're gonna, we gotta figure it out, we've got twenty-five years left. Um, agreement overview, for those of you who don't know, um, we signed that, we pay an annual rent to the city, and then a portion of the naming rights, uh, fifty percent of the naming rights comes back to the city, and we contribute a dollar per ticket sold over fifty thousand, and that includes Woodpecker Games and special events. So that goes into the ARR Fund. Um, we have agreed not to let that fund go below three-hundred-thousand dollars. Um, when we need to use some of that money for improvements at the ballpark, we have a, a meeting with our ARR Fund, our, our board, Advisory Board, thank you for being here. Uh, and then that comes before city council for approval. So, that's kind of the backend of that. We did have quite a few improvements we've had to make, um, and we, we hit that fund pretty hard last year already, and then we've done more improvements outside of that so that we're up to standard. But if anyone has questions about that, happy to answer those anytime. Um, our doors are open, we will be better and more consistent on, on both sides about making sure we have those reports to everybody as well. Um, and then, we've agreed, it's, it's in our, in our lease agreement, or in our, um, contract, that fifty thousand-plus attendance for special events each year. So, we were a little shy of that coming out of COVID, but we're getting there. So, events like UNC-ECU are really going to help chip away at those things. Ballpark improvements, I touched on, um, PDL requirements, just for those who don't know, that's Major League Baseball's requirements of what the facility, the standard that it has to be. So, we get that from them, we have to make sure we're, we're in code. So, for the first, last year, we had to be below thirty points, PDL points, and that's everything from square footage of the visiting locker room, to the number of lockers in the training room, to the height of the batter's eye, all of that stuff that we get graded on, and if we're over a certain level of points, we have to fix it, or we're not within code. So, we did, in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two to twenty-three, we had to update the visitors' dining room, or added on, actually, and build a female locker room for the traveling coaching staff. Um, so those were required things, that got us below our point total, that cost eight-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. Some of that came from that fund. Um, the rest, we borrowed, um, substantially from Houston, we'll pay them back over four to five years. We thought, great, what else can we have wrong? It's a brand-new facility. This year, um, in the offseason, we got to extend the batter's eye, seven feet taller, because it was seven feet too short, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, musco lighting was a little bit too light, or not bright enough, I guess, not, a little too dark. Um, so we just saw, if anyone was by the last couple of weeks, there were cranes over there adding new lighting. Um, but, good return on that is if we ever are able to host NCAA regional games, um, we are up to TV code, so we would be able to broadcast Segra Stadium on TV for those games. Um, we added cage lighting, laser graded the, the field, had to get that pitcher's mound, so it drops one inch per foot all the way down. Um, all those things that add up, and I think, total this offseason, we are in over another three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we put into the facility. Um, the trouble with the PDL is, you have to do it, there's no solid return, you know, to the fans. So now, we get that behind us, we can start making improvements that are actually fan-friendly, forward-facing. But, you know, we're always an open book, so you have questions about those things, let me know. I will say, that is why we are so protective of the field and the grass and the events that we host, um, on the field, because that all, to laser grade and fix that grass, um, to be to spec, adds up very quickly. All right, our relationship with the city, we have the Advisory Board I've spoken of, we meet quarterly to review the ARR Fund, economic impact, events and attendance reports, um, that's open, anyone that wants to come in. Uh, we have a, a board that's elected through that. Um, city manager Hewitt's office has been great, we meet with the city, uh, anytime we have any issues, events, planning, um, always responsive. So, I mean, really, great relationship all in all on our end, um, want to be as open and honest to you guys as we can, you know, we owe it to the, this community, and we're here to stay. So, um, challenge that we always have, the plaza, and I know that's ongoing conversation, so we'll get there on that, and then parking, um, that's always, you know, when we send out surveys, the number one thing we hear about is parking. Coming from New York, I don't think it's so bad. So, you know, but we, we'll work through that, um, as well, and I think we can make some improvements on our website and, you know, how we're promoting those things, too. So it should help appease some of the fans as well. Uh, looking ahead, community involvement is huge for us, so making sure our staff, like I said, is involved individually and as a team, out in the community in different entities, ballpark additions, those fan-facing improvements that we can do, adding different entertainment elements, interactive things for fans when they're at the ballpark, and for other events, and then looking for more events. Um, we have a new, new guy who's great at this, he's talking to MMA groups, he's talking to mini golf, disc golf, uh, we'd love to have a concert in there, um, talking to Nitro Circus, which the grounds crew may not like dirt bikes out there, but, uh, we'll, we'll see how we do. Um, and then, I know one big thing that wanted to mention and, and put out there is the public park hours. I know it's written, um, that Segra Stadium should be here, could be open, uh, as public park, and our bigger concerns on that, that we always want to address, is security and safety. Um, anytime the park's open to the public, we have security staffed there to make sure people are, bags are checked, and that it is still a safe environment. So if we are to open it to the public for certain hours, we want to make sure there are plans in place to keep that same security and safety, uh, for everyone, and that any of those costs are, are thought through, um, from, you know, stocking the bathrooms, to cleaning, to, to anything. So, um, that is on the talks, we've, we've discussed that with the city, we're talking to Houston about that as well, and what they recommend from, you know, what they do, um, but hopefully, we can come to an agreement on that in the future and have something to roll out. All right. I was a whirlwind, five years in, what, ten minutes? But, but, any questions?
Yeah, well, five years, not over yet, we got some questions for you, sir.
Yes.
You, you did a great, first, great job. First of all, thank you, uh, in the Woodpeckers, you've been an awesome partner. Uh, it's hard to believe five years has, has gone by. Did have a couple of councilmember questions, uh, did want to ask a couple of things. One, um, I remember when we first did this, I was kind of the chair of the baseball committee, um, we made it where the field could be converted for soccer and for football during offseason. We hadn't really been able to, to get the, the full benefit of the popularity of soccer or host a football, you know, four-eight, three-eight championship here in downtown, I think would be great. How, how are the Woodpeckers on, on the bid, the ability to do that during the offseason?
From my understanding, and I have to go back and check, is that when it was finally constructed and built, that there's not quite enough space. It's with the end zones and things, so we'd have to look at that first and foremost, to make sure we really have the, the footprint. Um, the other on our...
For soccer as well?
Uh, I'd have to look, we have to see. Should be bigger than football, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but on our end, it's, it's just that turf management, um, to re-sod a field is about a hundred grand, um, if, if not more. So, just want to make sure if we are hosting things, if it, we'd have to shave the mound down, obviously, to have those sports, and then we have to rebuild that. Um, so going through all that process, we're not opposed to it. Uh, the more people that come to the stadium, the better, uh, for us, just want to make sure.
Because I was just thinking, that may have less impact than a dirt bike race or something like that, but soccer's very...
Dirt, dirt bikes aren't high on my list. Uh, it would definitely be vetted through, um, they bring in dirt and put things down and haul it back out, but...
All right, and the last thing I, I'll go before I go to Councilmember Benevente and then here, is the public access. When we did this, uh, we explained to the citizens the benefit of the forty-two million dollars we were spending, uh, was that they would have access for walking tracks and, and that kind of thing. Speak to that a little bit about what we need to do to be able to fulfill that promise.
Yeah, and number one for us is the plan for safety and security, um, to clear the stadium, so if people are bringing bags in, if they're leaving bags, or if they, you're right now, we haven't seen the need. If anyone comes over and says, hey, can I come in and see the ballpark, we let them in, um, we show them around, but we walk around with them. So, just opening the gates for us would be, will there be security there checking bags? Um, the last thing we want is someone to bring something in, leave it there, come back in through security for our games and pick up some sort of weapon that they've left during the day. So, just thinking through that, you know, do we sweep the stadium afterwards? Are the bathrooms open? Uh, do we have to clear those out, cleaning them, stocking them? Um, right now, the majority of people that come in, um, sometimes over the fence, are the homeless, and they leave things around, and it, there's a cost to us, and a, really a security threat. So, playing through that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Benevente in and here. I think you covered it, but I just wanted to, for my part, um, highlight that the potential for concerts, the potential for those types of events is definitely something, um, I'd love to see. I think... to see. I think when I wasn't on council at the time, I was just a citizen, I think that was one of those promises that I was most excited about. You know, we've got some amazing artists from Fayetteville that are on the national stage and what a better place for them to kind of have a homecoming than at the Woodpecker Stadium. So just to put some more weight on that scale to say that concerts and having potentially, you know, some big names coming to our stadium would be something we're interested in and excited about.
Absolutely.
Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Skinner, thank you for your presentation. Pretty good. I like what I've heard thus far. When we were first having these discussions during the earlier stages, we talked about, at least I thought I remember, that we dealt with having some of our local teams, maybe our Pee-wee league teams and I think I remember, was it the Southern, the Southern Baseball League? It was a smaller league. I don't remember hearing those, you know, that participation. Just wondering where we are with that, if I'm clear. And just to somewhat relate to what I think the mayor stated as far as that local city participation, where we look at some of our little, our little teams, maybe like I said, our Pee-wee teams or our parks and rec teams, someone, I mean, that would be a great thing for them to be out there playing on the big boys' field.
Yeah, so the baselines would be a little long for them. It would take a while for them to get down that 60-foot baseline. But we are open, we have free clinics throughout the year with Chevy Baseball and just the ones that we do. Really, anyone that reaches out to us, we're open to that discussion of how do we make that work. Obviously, if they want to play under the lights or something, there's costs involved in that. So we just have to make sure that that is a plan in place, that we can't just let anyone always out there, especially on the field, on the concourse and things, obviously we're easier, we can handle that, but.
So nothing like that has taken place yet? Because I know it was a part of the initial conversation.
Yeah, not that I know, we have the free college, or excuse me, high school, Jackie Robinson Showcase, it's Title I schools, that'll be this May. So we do that annually. Otherwise, not that I know of, but not off the table.
Yeah, not off the table. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Sorry. Councilmember Green and then Davis.
Michelle, thank you for being here. I enjoyed your presentation. I enjoyed the day at the ballpark the afternoon. I think as residents of Fayetteville, we often forget what we have here. We tend to overlook it sometimes, not intentionally, it just gets, we get busy in our daily lives. So in saying that, I just want you to know that I appreciated that entire experience, saw some things I didn't even know existed in the facility across the street. And I just hope you will continue to do a great job of marketing because I think that so many times, we do not do a good job of marketing ourselves. And by that, I mean the community, I mean the county arena, the county auditorium. I hear about things after they've finished. You know, I hear about a concert that's gone and then I hear about it. So I don't believe that we do a good job marketing ourselves. And so I want to commend you on the marketing piece and I know you have great staff over there. We were introduced to them that day and I would encourage anybody who has not taken the time to give you a call and go over and tour the facility because it truly is amazing and it's a definite asset. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and the facility really was a selling point of me taking this job. I was with that team for 12 years, perfectly happy. Houston called and said, are you interested? And I said, no, I don't know about that. If you guys Googled Fayetteville, you know what? They flew me down here and I saw it and I thought, absolutely, I'm in. Everyone I met was great here, the facility is fantastic. I spent a weekend just walking around downtown, going out to dirtbags, all these places and thought, this is a no-brainer. It'd be stupid not to come here. So thank you for that. We will continue to market that. We are making sure that we're building more relationships between Cool Springs with the city, with distinctly Fayetteville, so that we can continue to tell our story, but we can reach people that we otherwise aren't through other avenues as well.
Lauren, did you record that part? All right. Councilman Davis.
Well, just, okay, thank you. Thank you, good to see you again. So I know up in Concord area, they have like a ice skating rink and so, in the wintertime. So is that something that we can possibly get on the, at the Pecker Stadium in the wintertime, maybe like a ice skating rink so people won't have to travel to Concord to do it?
I would love that. Houston's baseball operations does not love that for the same reason, they don't like dirt bikes or soccer. But we actually, we've looked into that a little bit and is that real ice? Is that artificial ice? Can we do something smaller, even up on the landing deck or somewhere? If we don't put it on the field, can we put it on the infield dirt? So it's in discussion. I believe when Charlotte and maybe Durham did it, it's the year they were going to redo their field anyway, so they knew they were putting new turf down. So that basically they just rolled with it. So maybe in a few years, I mean, a whole new field, that's our key. But it is something we've talked about and we would love to have more events like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. As a councilmember as well and as a resident, I would love to see some more entertainment as well as marketing. I know I've been a Girl Scout troop leader for like over five years and I was notified that you guys are having, May the 11th, having a Girl Scout night, which they can bring tents and have a sleepover there. So I just wanted to put that information out there for anybody that's having children, that participate with Girl Scouts. So thank you all for what you're doing in our community.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Paul Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin made this come to my head. You know, doing that for the Girl Scouts, that's a really cool thing. I mean, if I was a mom and I saw that, I would, and if my girl wasn't a Girl Scout, I would be like, we need to get into Girl Scouts, this is kind of cool. So my question is, do we partner with you any in our, you know, Faye TV or anything like that? Have we done any of that? Yes. So I guess I need to get on Faye TV and start looking at some programs. But I think that that might be something that we need to put out to our people to look at that because I think there's a good opportunity there.
Yeah, and that goes back to those partnerships. We can make sure we're better about getting all that information to you guys so you're not scrubbing our Facebook or something for what's going on. Best ways to find us, our website, our Facebook, but we're trying to expand that so it's not just a luck of the draw if you come across something.
So I get that and what I, you know, I'm a mom of boys, we watched, you know, baseball, we do the whole baseball thing. But when you said the Girl Scouts, it's like a whole different level of people to reach out to. So if we can help, I just think we need to be a part of that. Thank you.
We do it for the Boy Scouts as well.
I was about to say.
Well, but that's your audience. That's your audience.
So before we let you go, we have a tendency to keep people too long. I just did want to ask about the marketing piece that she just mentioned. So first, on the soccer, can artificial turf be used to protect your natural turf?
I am not sure. Usually we'd put like an event deck down for concerts, things like that. I don't know if you would put turf over the top of that or if that becomes a safety issue for the soccer players if it slides.
Okay. So will you, can we commit to some follow-up on that?
Yeah.
And the other thing is the, as you said about the concerts, I think your presentation at the beginning of this was very impressive, right? And I was out of the area and I saw a lot of aggressive marketing by Asheville to show downtown and show, you know, fireworks and show different highlights, same type of highlight loop. I think that's an opportunity for the city, us and distinctly Fayetteville to partner with you to run some advertising and marketing. You know, we've got this mindset that Faye TV is a catch-all, you know, some people watch it, but it's just not hitting the masses. But I think there may be some targeted marketing that can be done in the surrounding communities to show that there are things going on here and maybe council will be inclined to entertain in that with those partnerships. So just wanted to leave that with you. But thank you. Any other questions for her? Councilman Benaventian, you had something?
I was going to make a motion to accept the report.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Benaventian to accept. Second by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, discussion. All right, council look to you for action on that. Who did vote? Oh, all right, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Michelle. Welcome. All right, council moving to 5.02, employer of choice, Mr. Clip.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jerry Clip, Director of Human Resources here for the City of Fayetteville. And my presentation today is, as we think about the budget and what we want to recommend, obviously salaries, wages and benefits are among the top costliest in a budget. So we wanted to provide some compensation data with you today. We wanted to kind of share with you where we sit as an employer of choice, advise on the condition of our pay structure as we currently have it, and also address concerns in public safety regarding compression. So this is more of an informational and partly educational as well, presentation for you here today. So those of you who've been on council for a while recognize this graphic here. This is our employer of choice framework. And I really want to call your attention to this employee value proposition. So this is what we give to employees and this is what we expect back from our employees. So the City of Fayetteville invests in you, employee, so you can invest in our community. And as you know, we have excellent employees that work for the city, we have lots of great professionals that do a great job every day. And as a matter of fact, we were just recognized with the resident survey where the city significantly surpassed both the region and the U.S. average on customer service. And so, yes.
I saw it, it was good.
It was great, wasn't it? So that kind of tells you what caliber of employees that we have working for us here in the city. And of course, they deserve an organization that invests in them as they have invested in our community. So that's the whole proposition. So you'll see all of these pillars down here. We have everything from recognition up to meaningful work opportunities. We've been doing work in all of these different pillars to try to make our employee experience here the best that it can be. And today, we're going to focus mostly on this competitive compensation pillar here. So just some kind of education, basic education on our philosophy. We have our compensation philosophy here. Of course, with our compensation, we want to attract and retain a skilled and diverse workforce and we do that by offering competitive salaries. And also, we want to ensure equity, both internal and external, throughout the organization. As I've mentioned before, when we've done compensation studies, these are the different municipalities where we get data from them. And the reason why we selected these municipalities is because they're close to our size. And then we also have a couple in there that are local, such as Cumberland County and PWC. We want to be sure to, make sure we understand what's going on there as well. And I'll tell you that compensation is more of an art than a science, you know, when we have to straddle the line between market rates versus budget or, you know, how do we bring new employees onboard with the internal structure that we have? So there's a lot of art that goes into this as well and it's not only the science. I just wanted to advise you that we have actually two different pay structures here in the city. We have pay ranges and this is where we have jobs that are of similar internal and external worth that we kind of group together into a pay range with a minimum, a midpoint and a maximum. And then we also have step plans. And with the step plans, they're kind of all in the same pay grade, but they also incorporate very clearly defined pay progressions as you walk through the steps. And this is popular among law enforcement and government agencies. And so we do have, most everybody's in a pay range compensation structure. We have police officers, firefighters, fire lieutenants and telecommunications that fall into the step plan structure. So what we decided to do is, what we're looking at right now is, what can we do as kind of a base for all of our employees? And this is what we're looking at at this time. So we're looking at a basic, about a 4% increase. So for the step plan, that will be a 4% for each step, okay? And those numbers there associate with the different, with the four positions that are in a step plan. And then everybody else, we get 4% of midpoint. And then we'd be 3.6 million for that, so a total of 6.2 million going across the board for just the basic 4%. One of the things we also would like to do this year, if we can, is offer a 1% increase in the 401K contribution that the city contributes. When we've looked at this in other municipalities, most municipalities offer 5% to their employees. Last year, we were able to do a percent and that brought us up to 2%. If we do another 1.1% this year, that would bring us up to 3%. And the idea is to increase 1% every year until we get up to that 5%. And so you see the cost of what that might be there for that. Also wanted to just let you know, if we go back to this slide, we have a benefits factor that we add to the base cost as well. So for sworn officers, we need to add 33.79% to the rate that we give them and for all others, a 21.56% rate for benefits and other things. So it can get pretty costly, actually. All right. I want to talk a little bit about compression because we've heard a lot about that in the last few years. In fact, my first time that I presented to you, those that were on the city council at that time, this was a main concern of mine was compression. And what we've done in the past is when we move a position to a higher pay grade, if an employee is above the new minimum of the new pay grade, they stay where they are. And if an employee is below the new minimum of the new pay grade, they move to the new minimum. And what this does is it begins to cause compression at the lower end of the pay scale. And that's what I saw when I first came in here. We were pretty good with the pay ranges themselves, but placing people in the pay ranges, there was a lot of compression going on. So just to give you an example, we have an employee working in Job A in grade 101, making $15 an hour. If that employee got a 4% increase in midpoint, they now make 1577 and they may have been in that job for, you know, 10 months, 11 months, however long. If we decided to change Job A from grade 101, pay grade 101 to 102, the minimum for pay grade 102 is 1620. So what we've done in the past, since 1577 is below the minimum of the new pay grade of 1620, we moved the employee from 1577 to 1620. And then a few months later, a new employee comes in and they're brought in at the same rate of 1620. So that's how compression, that's how compression comes about. That's one way it does anyway. And that's what I saw a lot of. Fortunately, this council indicated they wanted a pay study done, which we did. And back in 2022, we made significant changes in our compensation structure as a result of that pay study. And we were able to decompress at least a little bit, some of the positions, most of the positions throughout the city. So they, what we did is we placed them in their pay grade based on how many years in their current position. And they got changes in their compensation for a maximum of $10,000 per employee. So we did a pretty big upgrade at that time. Step employees remain on the same step and I'm going to be delving into this in just a minute, but they also received a pay adjustment based on the new amount for their step. So one of the things that we're thinking about is going forward to try to address this compensation or this compression issue. Whenever there's a market adjustment causing an increase in a pay grade, all those in the pay grade would receive what we call a compa ratio adjustment. And I'll explain that in just a minute. And then- And then for the step plan, if we can do what we did last year and include the market adjustment in their current step and then increase their step, that'll help with the compression with the step folks. So again, back to our example, we have somebody that, uh, came in as a new employee at $15 an hour in pay grade 101. You see the minimum of the pay grade is $15 over here. Midpoint is 1913, the maximum is 2325. What compa ratio really is, is just a ratio compared to the midpoint. So at $15 an hour, they're at 78% compa ratio. And just to let you know, when you're at midpoint, that means you're at 100% compa ratio. If it's below 100%, then you're below midpoint. If it's above 100%, then you're above midpoint. So it's, it's just a ratio to where you are compared to the midpoint. So somebody comes in at $15 an hour, as we said, they got a, uh, 4% of midpoint adjustment, an increase in their pay. They went to 1577. Now they're at 82% compa ratio. And we moved that same position now. The market says you need to move it up a pay grade, so we do that. So they go to pay grade 102 with a minimum of 1620, midpoint of 2066, and a maximum of 2511. What we did in the past is we brought them in at 1620. But with, uh, with this compa ratio, we would bring them in at the same compa ratio of 82%, and they would actually come in at 1685. That way, they're con- continuing to move along in the pay grade, and those that come in behind them as new hires will then be at 1620, and you start to have some differentiation there. So that's what we're hoping to do, is, uh, is deal with compression in this way as well. Now let's talk specifically about, uh, the police, because I know there's been lots of questions about that as well. So what I did is I did a history, five-year look back of the, the police step history. So in August 5th of, of 2019, the entry rate was 34489. They had 13 steps. And clear up to last year, their entry now is 43860, and they have 10 steps. So just looking at the increase in the entry rate over the four years that I have listed here, it's a 27.2% increase. You will notice, though, that, uh, in 2019, they had 13 steps. They moved to the next step. And then in 2020, they were still at 13 steps, but there, you'll see that the entry rate went up significantly. And because of that, uh, decisions were made at that time to either hold officers on the same step. A few, very few went up a step. Most from step three to step 10 actually went back a step, okay? And, and I'm going to be talking about this on the next slide as well. But this is the first year where we kind of deviated from years of service equal step, because that's how these usually are. Then in 2021, uh, you'll notice that we continued to have 13 steps. They moved to the next step, so that year was, was good. And then in January of 2022, that step structure collapsed from 13 steps down to 10 steps. Then we had the same issue where some people, uh, most people went back a step. And so there is, uh, the, again, this kind of veered us off course. So now we have two years, 2020 and 2022, where, um, it, it didn't equal the years of service. And then later that same year in 2022, you'll see that the entry rate went up even a little bit more. And we were still at 10 steps, and we held the step. And then last year, again, the entry rate went up, um, and we went to the next steps. We were able to continue on beyond that. So, um, to give you an example, so here is Officer A. They came in February of 2018. They started on step zero at 34489. You'll see in 2019, they went up to step one, got a 4% increase there. In 2020, so this is the year that the things kind of got out of whack a little bit, things deviated, uh, they went up to 39750, but they were still at step one. 2021, they went up to step two. In 2022, in January, they went back to step one. So you see the steps are, are kind of weird and funky because of the years 2020 and 2022. However, that being said, you'll see that in between each of these steps, no matter what the steps were, they continued to get an increase. Officer B on the right here came in 2020, and the same things, y-you can read that there and, and what increase they got. So on one hand, I can see where, uh, the steps are a little bit deviated now. They don't make too much sense, but every year, they continue to get an increase. I think what is, uh, disheartening, though, is when you have somebody that was here in February 2018, and somebody came in in December of 2020, so that's almost three years later, they're at the same amount down here. So, so I can see compression in that regard. Now, just to give you a comparison also, I looked at a general employee, what they got. So back in 2019, they got a 2% of midpoint. In 2020, they got a bonus, and that was a year that a lot of things shifted with pay ranges and things like that. Uh, in 2021, it's a 3% of midpoint, uh, increase. And then in 2022, and keep in mind, there's, there's two changes here for police. Um, it was a 4% of midpoint, and then last year was 4% of midpoint. And you'll notice that the police officers still got quite an increase over and above the general employees. So the first employee has increased their pay by $13,451 over five years, representing a 39% increase. So I can, I can see both sides of the, of the coin here. So delve in into this a little bit more. I was thinking, so what, what can we do with this compression? So I created this chart. The blue bars here represent the number of employees that came in these years. So fiscal year '23 to '24, we had about 12 employees come in, and '22 to '23, about this many. Um, and then these other colored lines represent the steps that they're on. So you'll notice that, uh, for instance, here in the years '22 to '23, they're on step one. Uh, for step two, it covers a variety of years. And then over here, step three, generally what I see here is there's a two-year span based on step. All right? Except for these step two folks right here. And I was thinking, well, maybe we can move these folks up to the next step, and maybe that would help. But then after I thought about it a little bit more, I, I came to understand that we're, we're just exacerbating the problem in the next step up, too. I mean, we're, we're going to have four to five years then, uh, in the next step up, and is that fair? So then what I thought of, perhaps what we could do is do some kind of, I don't know what we want to call it, a stipend, a differential, whatever you want to call it, um, for about 30 employees that fall into this group right here, that would be between the steps, so it'd be like a mid-step. And maybe offer that to them to kind of help with this compression. So if we did that, and again, it's about 30 employees, um, it would be about $1,040 additional per employee, and the total cost would be $57,000, a little over that. Or if we go with the market plan, which I'll be sharing with you here pretty soon, it would be, uh, $1,650 and about 73, 73 and a half thousand. So we have the basic plan, that was about 4% for everybody, and then we add this compression option on possibly with the police. And then we have the, the market rate options. So, uh, you'll see here with police officers, their current, where they sit currently in their, uh, step plan is a minimum of 43860, and they go up to 65790. The market is saying that the entry rate should be at 50,555 to about 84,000. So, um, we see that, that they're behind. So option one there, um, that I have there would get them a little bit more kind of between those two, and it would cost about 620, well, about $630,000. Option two would actually get them to market at 50,000 to 83450, so that's right on market at a total cost of over 3 million. Firefighters are in the same boat where they're a little bit behind, as you can see the current there and, and the market. And, uh, the option that we have for them is to put them at 45,000 to 76620. And then fire lieutenants, which is the other one that's on a step plan, uh, same thing there. So for just the firefighters and fire lieutenants, that total cost would be 679411. Now, the tricky part is if we decide to do this, bring them up to market rate, then those above them, those above the police officers, those above the fire, fire lieutenants also need, need to be adjusted, or we're going to have issues with them bumping right up against them. So if we did them as well and, and did the compa ratio formula, like I shared with you earlier in the presentation, uh, that would equate to about 1.3 million to do that, to get them where they need to be. So, as a summary, investment in our employees, basic plan, that would be about 6.9, almost $7 million. We add on top of that the compression fix for the police department. That's additional to that. And then if we add the market plan, um, depending upon which option we choose, uh, those are, are the amounts that we're calculating at this time that that would be. So if we chose the highest cost in all of these categories, we're looking at about a little over $12 million to do all of this. So.
Mayor?
Um, one of the things to councilmembers, we, um, owe you some updated slides. Um, the, uh, slides that Jerry was on, uh, were not the ones that match in your packet, and we need to, we will send those to you, um, as soon as we get them. And I apologize if they were not uploaded earlier today. But we will get you those. But he is available for that, uh, for questions, mayor.
Yeah. Uh, Councilman Herr, uh, Mayor Protim, Benavente, and myself, uh, Thompson, and myself. Looks like everybody.
If, if the... The question that I had in my mind, your last statement sort of triggered me to that, to what you're saying at the end. In order for us to, if we consider our, I, I, I assume you meaning option two on your last page, your last slide, that we are looking at, and we're only looking at the police, well, the, the fire is here, too. So explain to me, are we, are we looking at the police and fire for the total of the possible 12 million of, yes?
Yes, it would be the basic plan, 4% for everybody. Add on to that the compression fix for the police department, and add on to that the market plan for both the police department, fire department, and all those above the police officer and fire lieutenant.
If, and depending on how, you know, as we go through the budget season and look at what we can do, this is also, they will be receiving whatever the overall increase for all the city employees will be also, whatever, um, that we give. And I think last year, I think we did, what, 4%?
4%.
So is that how this works also?
Yes, that's included in the basic plan, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And, and I should have said this from the beginning or focused on a little bit more is, is this is, we're just throwing out figures. We're, we're still trying to figure out what we want to do and present to you as part of the budget. Uh, but I just wanted you to know kind of what we're wrestling with up here.
And explain one more thing to me. Uh, you said that, um, years of, years of service equal steps, correct?
They did at one time. I think that was the intent. It was before I was here, but I believe it was the intent.
Okay, so, so that means that, ex-explain what that means. I, I know what it means to me. Say that, your explanation of that to me.
So if you are a new, uh, officer, you come in at step zero. At, uh, year one, you go to step one. At year two, you go to step two, and so on and so forth. And some municipalities do it every other year, so it's, you know, one step every two years, things like that.
Also add in, or are those with other city experiences that come into the city of Fayetteville? They are, wherever they work, is that something that's going to be added in to our step program, depending on where they came from and what step they were, or, or what, uh, years of service that they had?
Yes, we, we look at those, we call those lateral hires, because they're coming from like a, another police agency. And we look at their scales to determine where they would fit in our scales, and they would come in equally.
12 million, okay.
All right.
Thank you for now.
Thank you, Councilman Herr. Uh, Mayor Protim, Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a few questions, and I don't know if both chiefs need to answer this for me. How many police officers are we down?
77.
Okay. And how many fire are we down? 50?
15.
15, okay. So I guess my question is for, especially for the police in the past, you know, since 2020, we've stayed at that. I, I can even remember before 2020, we were down police officers. So I guess the reality of us getting 77 police officers in a budget year is probably not going to happen. I'm, I am a gambling woman, and I believe that I would win. Oh, yeah. I would, I'm here.
Sports books, stay office.
But I would, but what I would say is I, I could gamble that we are not going to field 77 positions. I think we would be happy if we fielded 25 of those, and that's really reaching high. So I guess my question is, number one to the chief, is this, will this be sufficient to both chiefs? Or, I shouldn't, let me ask this a different way. Is this a happy medium for our people that are out there saving our lives with fire and police every day?
Mayor Protim, um, I will take this. Um, if you talk to both chiefs, the answer on the salary is they think it's, the starting salary is a welcome addition. The chief, all of the chiefs, and I would prefer to be able to set a rate that you didn't have to revisit it every year. If you would go back to one of the slides that actually showed the increases that were made by council, you made one, um, adjustment in January of one year, you made another one in August of the same year. Um, we are simply, um, uh, not able to keep pace. At 50,000 right now, I think, um, Carrie and others are above that, and we're looking to move from, what are we at now, chief? Is it 40, uh, 40, where's chief? 43 to start now, and I think Rocky Mount, we, is it 60?
So...
And so, and I'm, I'm coming, I'm sorry, Mayor Protim. So the, they both have two issues. Um, the fire department, police department are about starting salaries, but more pronounced in the police than in fire is also the compression issue. And the chief would, um, and, and HR believe that the compression is a significant issue, and we probably need to do more as it relates to addressing the compression. But I think that, as you said, both of them are really, really good starts.
So, uh, so what I'm hearing that you did answer the question for me is that compression is a, is a major concern, which I understand that. So with that being said, I, I know that we are talking a $12 million bill here. I would be interested to see, you know, we're down 77 officers, they're not going to get filled. I mean, there's probably 50 positions that are not going to be filled of what that, that cost is, of what the savings is. That, that was my only question. And when I did ask the chiefs for their feedback, is what everybody has to understand, when we go sit down and have dinner, people are going to tell us. They're going to tell us. So I, I want to hear it from, from the chiefs to say, you know, they understand that, you know, there's not a money tree, but, you know, this is some way to solve the issue. We don't want, we want to get off the hamster wheel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilman McGreen?
To Mayor Protim's, um, comment about the 77 police down, and she felt that 25 would be likely to be hired, that's the number we've lost since January, 24 officers we've lost since January. So we have to address this problem. I'm a little concerned on this chart. When you talk about a stipend or a differential, and looking at something like that, are you, you're only addressing a one-time payment and a one-time issue, correct? Or what do you see it being? Let me ask that. What do you see it being?
How, what I see it being, if we decide to go this way, is every year, the difference between whatever grades they kind of fall between.
Okay, so the other thing that I heard Chief Raiden say during our strategic planning session, was that he has officers that, and I don't know that these were the exact steps, but he made the point that there were officers at step three that should be at step five or step six, that are way below the steps they should be at. So that's further my concern, because those are things that you're not just talking about officers that are one step behind. We're talking about officers that are several steps behind. So I am concerned about that, and I would like to see us discuss in more detail what it looks like to bring, and I'm assuming, I, I don't want to assume, are in this, in this model, any of these models, are you talking about bringing those officers up to their correct step? Are you just talking about bringing everybody up one step or two steps? What, what is it, what are we looking at in the data?
So what I'm looking at is being sure to move everybody to the next step every year from this point forward, if we can, based on budget. And then for these 30 officers, give them a half step as well. We thought about going back to, you know, relating service years to, to steps, but first of all, I think that will be an even much higher cost than this. And in the future, we don't know if we're going to have to skip a step again. I mean, that has happened twice already in the last five years. So I, I feel like this is the best way to do it, is to kind of capture that big group that has that many, many years, you know, gap on that step, and then take them up a half a step.
And Councilmember Green, and chiefs, if y'all would, both of y'all come sit up front, if you would. It's, one of the challenges that we have is that before we had 13 steps, and then we compressed it down to 10 to try to make the steps between step richer. And anyone who is hired today as a police officer in particular, with a 10-step plan that we currently have, and again, I was here and other councilmen, we kind of know why we did it, we want them to work for us longer than 10 years. So what happens in the 11th year? So embedded in this, in this equation of a step plan that is equivalent to years, already creates, it's going to be, it's a big bubble that we're going to be creating going down the road. There are only so many people who can get promoted, there are so many, only so many people who can go to the sergeants or other levels and things like that. And so the step plan in of itself has a challenge. I and some other people were here long enough to know when we actually put the Police Department on a step plan, and they rolled their longevity into their base. So that was one of the issues that addressed how long people had been with you, and how Jerry is proposing the float, which is my word for the compression piece, is almost for those officers who we have said have been harmed because of how we've moved them on the steps, that looks and feels to me like reinserting that longevity piece for them, for that differential, for the remainder of their career, at least until they promote to the next rank. And then that one might go away, because again, we would have that happening as well. But again, if you were to talk to the chief, and, and we will, and council funding being there and support for the compression piece, there will, could be additional officers or positions that we would also have to look at for compression component as well. But the number is huge. We did not talk about the challenges that we are having in all of our other departments, even though those were embedded in some of the numbers he had there. Right now, chief, we have how many vacancies in telecommunications, 22? 22 positions that we're down in Communications. When we go around and look around the city, if you've looked at our opening sheet, which are our new jobs, the jobs that we have on there are not just minimum wage or entry-level jobs. We actually have jobs all the way down from the Office of Community Safety Director, all the way down. I mean, we have a wide range of jobs. And that really does speak to the recruitment challenges, recruitment and retention challenges we're having everywhere. But our goal to do was to bring you this, to tell you, and to tell the Police, the Fire Department as well, that we understand the challenges that they're having, we understand the salary issues that they're having, but also to share with council, and hopefully get some nods from you, that we're on the right track about bringing you some recommendations as part of our upcoming budget, that this is again, something that you've already told us you want to address, but we want to tell you just how large of a number, or numbers it's going to be when we start addressing this. So that was kind of a goal that we had for today.
All right, Councilmember Benavente.
How many total officers are we budgeted for? And so 431 minus the, what, 72 we said that are vacant? Seventy-seven. So we got 354, more or less, give or take. Where did we get the 431 number from?
So the last increase we had to our staffing was under Chief Harold Medlock, and I think we increased by either 30 or 40 officers back then.
What year was that, more or less?
That sounds about right, 2013. And that was based on recommendations, they did some studies. I believe Perf was one of them, that they brought in and took a look at the services that we provide around the city, our population density, our calls for service, and they did a ratio based on all of those considerations.
Would you say that since 2013, I guess, you know, more, a little bit over 10 years ago, license plate readers, ShotSpotter, I mean, a handful of technologies that have been implemented have grown since 10 years ago?
That's correct, but again, that's a technology. All that information has to be validated, verified, and corroborated by actual police officers. And, and, and those things, they help on the back end of an investigation, not on the front end when we're talking about officer response and crime prevention.
And the only other question I have, Mayor, excuse me, is, is for Mr. City Manager. This is part of an overall discussion around eventually our, our budget debates. I think during our strategic planning meeting, we were given a draft timeline of when we were supposed to expect certain pieces of information. Is this part of that timeline, or is that a timeline that we can get a final draft for?
We can give you an updated timeline. We have not provided you with the financial landscape yet, but that'll be coming, we think, next Monday. And we also owe you some CIP, TIP issues, information, and we're scrubbing that data as well, but we hope to get that to you as soon as possible. This is, because as you can see, the, the $12 million number is going to be the biggest driver, or even for the Fire and Police are going to be the biggest drivers in our budget. Things which, if, if enacted, are going to be beyond our control to necessarily manage down. And so we want to bring those to you early, and I think we also committed to doing this as well at the strategic planning retreat. So I think we are honoring that at the moment. But we do owe you some pieces from the retreat that we said we would get to you, and we've not done that yet.
Okay, you know, I, I believe that this is, I mean, good information, but I think we're, we're sort of asking the wrong question about how we're approaching public safety in, in the city of Fayetteville in 2024. You know, we have a number based on 10 years ago. I think it's time that we reevaluate that number based on some of the other initiatives that we've, we've begun. For example, in the first six months that Durham had an Officer Community Safety, the Police Department reported saving over 1,200 hours in those six months. That's essentially two months of those entire six months of time that they no longer had to spend, you know, working with folks that were better served by a different department. So if we're concerned about how many hours there are, and how many officers there are, I think we need to be asking, what do we really want our Police Department to be focused on? I think most people say we want violent crime addressed, we want reckless driving types of issues addressed. But we can manage what the budgetary concerns are to address compression, starting pay, in a way that also takes into consideration some of the 10 years of, of benefit of addressing public safety issues in a more comprehensive way, that may show at the end of the day, we don't have to rely solely on the law enforcement folks to do it all. And maybe that can help us get through this budget year without necessarily looking at the, the biggest price tag possible. So let's start asking some of those questions, so that we're not just assuming this is 2013 anymore. There, there's a lot of other ways that we can address public safety issues more effectively, and also with less expense as well.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have quite a few questions. But first, as I was listening to you, you made a statement that steps were going backwards, and decisions was made at that time. Was council, a previous council made that decision?
The first time in 2020, I'm not sure, because I wasn't here. In 2022, I, I believe, I, I know we had the approval of both chiefs. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure if it came here.
We can, we can, you know, divulge in that, I didn't want to put anybody on blast, but let me just ask this. You were stating that you can give them a stipend for catch-up by giving them the step increase and the half. How long would that take to give them all the back pay that we promised them by going to a step 13 plan to accommodate them?
I'll take, take some of this. As the, there was, at the time, as you look at the numbers, the council and the city said we were going to give 4%, 4%, and you have the slide. We honored that, and there were some cases where a person would be below the next step, and so they stayed on their step. And there were some times that a person would be above that. Again, the step is just a step, but the percentage that was guaranteed to them would put them either not on the step. And so a decision had to be made as to whether or not you're going to reach up, or you're going to put them on the closest step that they were. So it's, you can look at it as if we had made a commitment to someone to say, every year you're going to be, you're going to get a step, but they got the percentage. They just did not get the clarity of saying you're on step one, step two, step three, step four, step five. Because all the steps and the ranges moved. That is why, again, it did create the compression that you see, but the steps really are representative of between, and I'm just going to use this for whole numbers, because you know I'm not a math person, but 4%, 4%, 4%, 4%. When the ranges changed, then they would still get there, 4%, 4%, 4%, but that may not necessarily equate to getting to that step. But the proposal is not about looking and saying that someone, if they had moved to a step, when the step in the entire range that moved, that calculation does not go back and say that, that if they had moved to that next step in 2019, that would have been $700 extra every year. And then when they went to 2020, that would have been an additional 250. So we add 250 to that, and then we go back to 2019. That calculation does not include that.
I, I understand that, Doug, because as a government employee and working for the post office, we have a step program also. Ours go from A to, A to O. Every year that you meet a criteria, you will get a different pay step. That was guaranteed, that they promised you when you hired. Every time you got a cost of living pay, that applied to everybody, whether you was a step A, or whether you was step O. When you got a, a first-time employee coming in, you got a certain amount of pay. If you got a transfer, you got a certain amount of pay. Everybody's pay started, that's why everything went by seniority.
And locality pay as well.
Exactly. So here is my question when it comes to the seniority. Do we have a police officer that is a new hire with one year getting the same pay as a police officer that's been there for four years? Can somebody answer that question? Chief?
Not at the one year, but we do have several that are four, five, six years that are in step two.
So I guess my question is the same question I asked the first time. How do we get them what we promised them? Will that half a step along with the pay increase accommodate them, Mr. Jerry?
Again, I.
And if, and if not, what would the budget need beyond the $12 million to make that happen?
I think if we, so I think what you're asking is, should we put people back on according to their year of service where they fall? Is that your question? I think that would be an astronomical number, first of all. But secondly, even more concerning to me is that a year or two from now, if we have a limited budget and, and can't do that, then we're back in the same place we are now. That's why I looked at that chart, and I really concentrated on those that step two, which has that really broad span of years in there. And that's, in, in my mind, that's the best way to do it, is to take those folks and those 30 employees and give them like a half step until they either promote out, or till they reach their 10-year mark.
And you talked about a stipend, one-time stipend. Do you have a number for that, or what that would be for those individuals? Or would that be for everybody across the board?
That would be for those 30 individuals only.
My last question, Mr. Mayor. Market value?
Yes.
Isn't the market value different depending on where you live?
Yes.
So why, so how did you come up with the number of 50,000?
Well, again, all those municipalities that I showed you in the beginning, we got data from them. And again, it's more of an art than a science, and we kind of put it all together and figure this is about where it needs to be. What's interesting is in 2022, when we made, when we made all those changes, we were at the top of the market at that time, because we were below. And just in two years, here we are back. That, that's how much police income has increased, so.
Can I have one more follow-up, Mr. Mayor, please? So how do we keep pace with Liberty, Cumberland County, Hope County, Raleigh, so we don't lose 77 more officers to other municipalities?
It's a great question, and we've been trying to figure that out. You know, and compensation is not everything, I'll be the first to admit that, but we have to be competitive. I'll say that as well. But, you know, it could be other things, it could be the 401K percentage that we're trying to get up to 5%. It could be other, many other things.
Mr. Mayor, just, just, just one more comment.
All right.
As we talked over the budget last year, we talked about 401K, and that most people preferred not to have the 401K, they would have the money, rather have the money in their pocket now. Did you take that into consideration?
No, I didn't hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, great question, before I go to Councilmember Mahndrosen and Banks-McLaughlin. I think the answer to your question is, how do we, how do we support competitive salaries? 5.07. Kerry, smaller population, higher tax base, $600 million tax base. We, you know, our budget is, is three, more people, less money. So I think to pay more, we've got to bring in more. So 5.07, I'm excited about that. Councilmember Mahndrosen and Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we go back to the market rate option slide? So the, we have a current and a market and an option one and option two, and later, in the later slides, we have, or just below that, we have a cost for option one and two. What's the cost for the current? Do we have that number? I don't. And then the cost for the market? Because option, neither option one or two are equivalent to the market, is it?
Yes, option two, you see there is 50,000 to 83, 450.
But market's 55, 55 to 84, 649.
Wow.
So what's the, what's the, what's the cost of market?
Probably a little bit more than the cost of option two there, a little bit over 3 million.
So how many steps do, does the FPD currently have? Did we, did I hear we, we used to have 13, and we have 10?
Correct.
Okay, so then if we switch back to slide compression example, I don't have the slide numbers on here. But it's, I think, three, there you go. So Officer A, are you telling me that there's officers on the force that have been on the force six or seven or more years that are on step two?
Yes.
That's, that's astounding to me. So the.
But they've gotten an increase every year.
Well, I understand that, but that's not, that's like a bait and switch, that's not. If I, I can tell you personally, if I was employed and I thought I was going to get a step increase every year or every other year, and I worked somewhere for seven years and I was on step two, I don't care what my increase was every year, I wouldn't be too happy with that. Matter of fact, I left a corporate situation. Matter of fact, I left a corporate situation because it did something similar. They raised the starting salary and didn't raise us to where there was a compression. And we said, hey, you have to fix this, and they didn't, and I left. I mean, that's just a personal opinion, but, and I was not putting my life on the line every day. The, I can't wrap my head around that. So how many, would, would we say that? We all know that recruiting is a problem. Is retention, isn't retention a bigger problem? Or let me ask the question this way. Is it harder to get somebody straight out of the academy or with one or two years' experience? Or is it harder to replace somebody that's been on the force with six or seven or eight years that decides to leave? Who's more valuable to the department?
The second one.
Right. So how many officers has this affected? Is 30 the number that it's affected?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have a number, how many have, how many we've lost because of this?
I don't have a number of how many we've lost. Right now, at the seven-year mark, I have nine officers who were hired at that seven-year range. For the six-year range, I have 19.
I mean, you know, to piggyback on other comments, I don't know who made those decisions, but it is not a matter of blame. It's how do we move forward from here and how do we rectify it? If we can't correct this, I mean, it's a, it's a major, major problem. In any, in any organization, it's more difficult to replace experience than it is new hires. So the fact that we're not addressing this compression issue, I mean, I think it's already gone too far. We have to address it this year, I think. I don't know how we move forward as a city without it. That's, that's...
All right, Council, we've got to, we've got to move on. We've got several other items, so go to Councilman Banks-McGloffen, then we'll... All right, I'll come to you at the end. Councilman Banks?
Mine is more of a comment because most of the answers kind of been, most of the questions been answered. I hope that this council, however, be able to compensate our police officers and our fire department for all the hard work that they do. And just like was mentioned, like they're putting their lives on, on the line every day. The fact that we already, 70 officers, we have a shortage of 70 officers, and I'm sure we have many that's planning on leaving. We need to think about the retention. We need to think about the competitive, their salaries. And we need to just make sure that we compensate them. What does that, I guess I do have a question. So what would that look like if we, because we want to start with what we have? The 30 officers, how can we compensate them and then move forward with new hires? And helping, you know, fund them, well, salary-wise? Because I think personally, I think we need to focus on the officers that we have in our fire department, firefighters that we currently have, because we don't want to lose them. And just like is mentioned, most of those 30 individuals are experienced. And it'd be hard to bring in someone with no experience. So how do, again, so how do we compensate the current officers?
I think, I think that's that slide that's in there.
Right, so that's what we need to meet. That's what we need to focus on, focus our attention on. And we write up the role from budget, so good conversation to have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Before I go to, before I go to Councilman Hare and then Benevente for a motion, because we've got to move on, guys, we're two hour and a half in, we've still got six items. Did want to ask for consideration, when you come back with these numbers, there's a couple of numbers missing today. There was a number for market, as Councilman Mahandros pointed out. I think there was option one, option two, but neither one of them were market numbers. And then two, if there is a 10 or 15 position freeze on hires, what does it look like for that additional compensation to be used to increase these mid-level inexperienced people? To help balance that out? So hopefully you can come back with some specifics at the next meeting for that. Councilmember Hare and Benevente, we got to go, guys.
Yep, Mayor, I'll just wait as we get closer to budget discussions.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Benevente?
C.M. Andrew Hewitt, can you help me understand a comment that was made about compression? Because my understanding is if you are hired for a particular job and you don't necessarily seek out becoming a detective or necessarily seek out, you know, advancement necessarily because you're satisfied with the level of work that you're doing, is it really so impossible to conceive that you wouldn't necessarily be paid that much more on the steps?
It's not. Compression is a factor of all pay plans. Council may recall that, I think it was two, three years ago, a decision from council was to start the minimum salary at $15 an hour. So we had part-time staff members who were making $15 an hour, and we had janitors, groundskeepers, who had been with the city for years, not 10 or 15, but years, who were not making $15 an hour. So we moved everyone to $15 an hour. We, at that point in time, did not have the, the comp ratio necessarily discussions because quite often, regretfully, we are, our budget does not grow at the same need as some of our salaries. And so the councils in the past and the staff in the past and the chiefs in the past have taken the limited money that we've had and tried to put it where it could do the most good. But yes, we have created a compression issue with how we've moved people through the ranges.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like I don't want us to overstate the issue of how, because it, how is it possible that these people haven't gotten a pay raise? Well, it's because they're still doing the same level of work and they've gotten pay raises. They're just not necessarily going to get paid as much as the chief of police is just because they've been here for 10 years. And then moreover, again, I think we're asking the wrong question when we're saying that we should just be trying to spend all this money on the compression. I think there's a level of that, but there's nothing that we can do to stop somebody from saying, I appreciate the salary, I'm still going to leverage that to go to some other jurisdiction. And a lot of the jurisdictions that people are leaving for are jurisdictions that have offices of community safety, where they don't necessarily have to do everything that they're expected to do here in the city of Fayetteville. So they can get paid more and do less of issues that they're not necessarily interested in signing up to be a police officer for. So again, I think we need to have a much more nuanced discussion. It's not just simply jumping on past councils or jumping on Director Clip saying, how could we have gotten to this point? It actually makes total sense how we got to this point. How are we going to get out of it? We have to be a little bit more nuanced and a lot more critical than just give them everything they want. Because this is a little more, it's deeper than that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. We were mighty surprised that you ended with that. Councilmember Thompson, you had something?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make it clear to all the listeners out there is that we need our police department. I sleep good at night knowing I have a great police department that's protecting me. I don't think we should give the police department everything they want. I think we need to give them everything that they deserve. Because if you're putting your line, your life on the line every day, I'm going to try to give you everything that you deserve. So I appreciate the great job that everybody at this table is doing to try to make sure that we rectify any pay inquiries that have been missed in the past so we don't have to go back and look at them again. We'll do our best to make sure that we fix it in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Clip. No action needed on that. All right, so I guess as we get into budget, we'll have some time where there's one particular item, which is very complex. We'll have enough time to dig into that. All right, so Council moving on.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Thank you, Chiefs. Council moving on to 5.03, Merkison Road Grocery Cooperative Feasibility Options. Mr. Colley, Mr. MacArthur?
Afternoon, Council. Figured y'all probably getting tired of me, so I brought some of my team to talk to y'all today. Back in December, council asked us to look into cooperative grocery store concepts for the Merkison Road area. Derek MacArthur, my economic development manager, looked into some research and talked to some other communities that had done some work. And so he's here to talk to you a little bit about that, and y'all won't hear from me again.
Where are you going?
Thank you so much. Thank you for, Mayor, Mayor Procham, and Council for having us here. Like he spoke about earlier, my name is Derek MacArthur. I'm the economic development manager here. I spoke with several different communities that had co-op programs and what they did and what they, what worked and what didn't work. Let's see. Give me one second. How we got here was talking about the food deserts. Two parts to that definition. One is where we talk about the poverty rate and being below that 20% and limited access to healthy food options within a one-mile area. Mostly focused on urban areas. Recent trends that we noticed was food deserts have declined slightly, but increased in lower-income communities. Then that terminology for food deserts, it goes different, different ways. You talk to different communities. The terminology has been challenged greater understanding of the socioeconomic drivers that are more clearly to understand. Other terms that communities have started to use are food swamps, food mirages, and food insecurities. All of these kind of go back to that same aspect of being a food desert. Impacts of food deserts. We looked at some of those, speaking with some of those in other communities, and it's the physical health, elevated risk of diabetes, obesity, heart disease, and other chronic diseases. There's a mental health challenge that also comes along with this chronic stress, digitization, and perceived powerless in self-determination. Economic impacts, that food desert has a major impact on the people. They may have less, less, able to work, they generate less income, and they manage financial resources. One of the other things that comes into place, crime rates. That's a kind of a stigma that we see, the chicken or the egg, which comes first. Crime can also, a lot of those grocery stores don't want to go places where there's crime. And also crime, we don't, it puts out those grocery stores. So we don't know which comes first, the food of the, the chicken or the egg. Local co-op examples. There's grocery co-ops are typically high-priced selections of locally sourced organic or niche food options. The models that address food insecurity in low-income communities are a product of community-led initiatives to develop their own and operate a grocery store. Most of the communities that we talked to, there was already a model in place, and they were working on it with the community-led efforts. Most of those efforts come from 501(c)(3)'s. And sometimes they are supported by local governments. One of the ones that we talked to that's really working on ground roots right now is Wilmington. It's the Northside Food Co-op. Just to give you a background of how long it takes, they started that in 2017, and they still don't have an opening date. Okay? It's a community initiative, it's a driven effort. What they did, the city gave and donated land. They donated land to the county. The county hired a project manager and a consultant. And now that the co-op is restructuring themselves to receive that land and turn it into a 501(c)(3). Raleigh has a co-op, started in 2013. Their plan is to get its function in 2015. 2025, excuse me. That is a community initiative. Okay? So we have some different things that we can look up here. We looked at what it would look like to be a co-op versus retail versus existing retail that we already have on the Merkison Corridor. We looked at some of the pros and some of the cons. The traditional grocery store, some of the pros. You know, that corporation comes in, they give support. They have structure, they have all those things in place. It creates job opportunities. Some of the cons, it is market-driven. If they don't see what they call rooftops, enough rooftops, they don't want to come. Those jobs, most of those jobs are part-time employment jobs. The horizon for that is anywhere from two to three years. Co-op grocery stores. Pros, locally owned, it's not profit-driven. Some of the cons, it's no structure. There's also a cost-benefit factor to the memberships. We have seen that the timeline for that takes anywhere from seven to 10 years. That is not a situation that happens overnight. One thing we do see, existing retail. It's faster, faster changes. They have, already have land in place. Some of the cons, limited changes. And some of those places have a current perception that nobody wants to go there. Operational sustainability is a risk. It's high-risk. Co-op would be a startup. Medium-risk, traditional grocery stores would most likely be a franchise. And a lower risk, existing profitable stores with the potential to increase shrinkage. There are several different places that people on the Merkison Road Corridor do their shopping currently. All right? Community economic development tools are different depending on each, on each approach. The Choice Grant Project. Currently, the health food options for the grocery store, and we're looking at the grocery store, the satellite bank, and the pharmacy. We have a commitment right now for $6 million total. Choice Funds is $2 million. We have a CDFI that is, is willing to contribute $3 million. And the city of Fayetteville, $1 million. During the CNI, we determined that the number-one survey need was the grocery store. The 2020 market study was the grocery store. And we're currently looking at having it at a central location that is the preferred location. Possible supports that we offer here at Center for Economic Community Development, we can offer low-interest loans, facade improvement grants, gap financing, land acquisition, technical support, workforce training, and help with zoning approvals. Those are some of the things that we can kind of offer up to all of these, suggest all of these different areas that we can choose from today. Next steps. In April or May, we anticipate the Choice Neighborhood to make the shortlist. In June or July, a site visit from HUD. In June, possibly August, we get the award notice. And then from 12, 12 to 18 months, the HUD approval of our finalized program. The remaining timeline is based on whatever approach that we select. Now, we, once again, we talked about before, we had some things in place. We already have Urban Strategies as a partner, Kingdom CDC, and the Institute. Any questions or concerns so far?
Councilman Benevente?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Here.
I brought an item to a work session a few months ago related to co-op grocery stores. And my intention with that was to, the same way that right now, if you want to build and get a permit somewhere here in the city, our building code inspecting staff has already established certain blueprints and certain models that fit within what the city wants. And we've sort of pre-approved or given sort of a thumbs up. If you follow essentially what's already been pre-approved, you get to sort of, you know, move through the system a little bit more quickly. Similarly, my hope is that there is a private group of individuals, neighborhoods, that decide they want to go the route of a nonprofit and go the route of establishing a co-op grocery store. But perhaps what we can do as a city and our professional staff is to do a little bit of legwork and say, hey, this is what a successful one does. And sort of package and blueprint and, you know, create sort of a toolkit for someone to then pick up the baton and go from there. And maybe it takes them five years. Maybe it takes them a little bit longer. But at least they have some confidence that, you know, some work was done to lead them in the right direction. Because one thing that Fayetteville struggles with, unlike maybe some of the bigger cities in the state, is they've got just that many more, you know, folks in a professional sphere sort of entering into establishing community home trusts, co-op grocery stores. Where we're lacking in that, maybe we can help bridge the gap and do a little bit of that homework and that legwork for someone to pick up and decide, I'm going to organize with my neighborhood and we're going to establish that grocery store and go from there. So that's still my interest. I think this was some great information. It's still not exactly what I was asking for. I know since I made that request, City Manager Hewitt, I think, was connecting with folks in the county about something that they were doing at FSU, but that that might not be moving forward, which was, you know, what I was afraid of. I wanted to make sure that maybe the community could... I wanted to make sure that maybe the community could still pick up the baton if they wanted to on this topic. So, I'm not sure if we have to accept this report or if this was just for information purposes, Mr. City Manager. But I wanted to renew and maybe further focus our staff's time and energy towards looking at some models that exist and sort of saying that, hey, the City of Fayetteville would very much welcome, if someone did these 10 steps, we might help you find that land. But you got to make sure that you've got all your ducks in a row. But maybe we can let people know what those ducks are.
Oh, thank you. I think in the presentation, the staff and Derek did go and look at, I think, the Wilmington model and Raleigh or Durham.
So, and also the Winston, but they actually have closed since.
And the co-op model, as appealing as it sounds, in North Carolina thus far has proved somewhat challenging because of the length of time. Staff has no problem in staying on top of that. But I think that the strategy that I think I heard is, once we are able to close on the Choice Neighborhood, we have a built-in constituency of people who did exactly what they've been working on in Wilmington for 12 years, which is a community-led initiative. On top of that, we'll have $6 million or thereabouts that we will be in a really good spot to jump off and to actually incentivize someone. One of the things that we have done with everything from our facade, grand enhancements, along the corridor, is that we've maintained a very attractive corridor. And so, there are some commercial spots that are potentially could serve in that regard. But I think the first step is fulfilling the plans and commitments and honoring the work of everyone who's volunteered and donated their time so far on the Choice Neighborhood. That, I think, will lead exactly to what you're seeking, which is potentially to allow us to jumpstart on the co-op. The other option is, and this is where Derek was at, is that we also don't look at... Don't cross off the thing that we may have to incentivize someone to come to the corridor in a larger way. We did have the International Farmers Market, which we readily acknowledge was not a one-for-one for what you wanted to do. But it really did have, and still does have, this very attractive proposal that we were pursuing at the time. But I get you, sir. I did understand.
A tracker of all of our previous councilmember requests. And in the tracker, it says that October 9, 2023, staff is looking at a consultant to bring back a proposal for this request. Is that still an effort that's being maintained on this topic of a co-op grocery store?
Is not. We looked at pricing and spoke with a couple of different consultants on that matter.
Well, I guess, wouldn't it be up to us to say whether or not we wanted to pay for it, and we should have been at least offered what those options were?
That is something we can definitely explore.
That'd be great. City Manager Hewitt, do we need to take a motion?
Well, hold on, councilmember. We've got some other questions. All right, councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. I tell you, this has been a topic close to my heart and others for years. I think ever since we moved out. I can't even remember who was down there. It wasn't Piggly Wiggly, was it? I'm just trying to throw what was it? What was it? But whatever it was initially that we had in the Walmart area, ever since that location has moved, it's been very difficult. And we have been selling. We have been pushing due to the Rosemary location of the grocery store and the Sky Bowl location of their super grocery store. It's been very, very difficult. So, I'm just thankful for all of the plans and thoughts and everything that we're putting, the initiatives that we're putting out there. But it's difficult. And especially where the location would be, because that Walmart location, what is that, 20 more years, 25 more years, 30, whatever it is, that would probably never, ever be open for a grocery store just due to the fact that they're not going to allow something like that to happen. So, my question is, what is it that we push? And I think we do a great job. But what is it that we push when new businesses are looking for locations and wanted to do things like what we're speaking of? What is it that our robo, which I don't see him, but where is Chris? Was Chris here? Oh, Chris is here. What do we push when we are marketing? That what is it that's stated in your proposal? Give me a concept of what that conversation sounds like.
Well, one of the things that... That's not... We don't necessarily do the big buffalo hunts on that for the grocery stores. The community amenities we can. But I know Derek, one of the reasons he was hired is because he does have a broad range of experience. But I think, Mr. Here, you nailed it. You were in the meetings with me when we all thought that Walmart had done a... Had blocked everyone from the market by doing that long-term lease. And that prevents people from necessarily coming into that location with another supermarket or something else like that. But specifically to your question as to what we market for, the types of industries and ECD that we look at, which is smaller frame than the big Walmarts. Derek or Chris, what do y'all have to ask?
So, some of the things we look at, we offer that gap financing. So, we're filling that gap to help that mom-and-pop grocery store go in that area. We'll do those facade grants where we can help them improve their area. We do workforce development where we offer to help get their employees trained. We offer technical assistance. We're helping them from anywhere from getting their business plan to finding funding sources out there. So, it's an array of resources that we provide to these business owners that they have right here in their local economy.
Well, and thank you. And, you know, thank you for all the councilmembers that continue to help push our corridor. But we just have to keep pushing it and don't give up. We have to continue to come up with out-of-the-box, out-of-the-box-type, regular grocery store-type thoughts as we move forward. So, but thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. So, council, as we look at this, I don't want to belabor that, but I think there's a real opportunity if we expand our thought process. You know, Family Dollar and Dollar Tree are closing about 1,000 branches nationally. They did a lot of merging where there was overlap between, they were located within, across the street, half-street. Merkison Road has two or three similar buildings. So, it could be some miniature version of that. You've got $6 million. I think the private sector option with incentives is the best because they know how to operate it, you know? Trying to get enough community members to agree on what color we're going to wear on neighborhood, on national night out is tough, right? And to run a business together is even tougher, which is, I think, why you see some of the things that you see with that. But I think to maybe help acquire some of these buildings as they come on the line... I'm not for buying real estate because I'm all for that from the city doing it. But there are incentives we could do. Kansas City did something where they offset rents for five years, or you offer some incentives with that $6 million to where you incentivize somebody who's in that space to come in to maybe a miniature, healthier, more targeted option. I think it's something we need to look at.
Yeah.
All right, councilmember.
Keep it moving.
So, I think that what you guys just described is the status quo. We're already doing all that. We're actively, the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation with Robert Van Gien is always incentivizing, always recruiting. That's always happening.
No, he's looking for large-scale employers.
Excuse me. Are we not currently trying to incentivize people to come open up things?
That's a different scope of work that you're talking about.
Yeah, what I'm describing, if the interest is to get a grocery store located in this area that's deprived of that, then you have opportunities with real estate coming up from these people who are in these leases that look to get out. And you have now money. You didn't have money before to offer a business to say that, I'll come over here and we'll match your investment with this or some creative way to do that. And I see Chris is nodding his head.
But we're always open for business on that.
No, but you... I mean, in general terms, yes. But it's always deal-specific. You know, Project XYZ comes in and says, hey, city, will you do this if I bring you 200 employees? I mean, so it's always deal-specific. I don't know that we've ever put anything out to market to say, we'll give you $1 million if you come to this area to operate it or whatever the incentive package is.
So, is that the action that we want to take tonight, then, to have his, Chris Colley's staff, put together an incentive package for, you know, having a grocery come to this area?
Well, Chris is back. He could probably speak to some of that. I think Norfolk, some of these other areas did some special incentivizing.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things there. First off, I think the manager was starting to talk, and the mayor did a good job of kind of advancing it. So, what SCUDC is looking at is, I hate to say industrial recruitment because it's so much more than industry, but they're looking for large-scale employers to come to our area, increase jobs and tax base. An area that we work in in that community economic development role is that retail lifestyle livability stuff, right? And so, you know, going back to councilmember Here talking about the Walmart. I've talked with the developers of that shopping center. I understand where they're at and what problem needs to be addressed. And it's just not surmountable. What we're looking for with this project that we've kind of scoped out is a smaller neighborhood-based grocery, right? This, you would not have 100 and 200-car parking lot-type development here. This is more for the neighborhood in and around Fayetteville State University and Elliott Circle, where we would be redeveloping that in conjunction with Choice Grant. What we're looking at here is $6 million that we do not currently have. We do have current programs that we offer. We have $125,000 of gap financing that we'll do on a real estate development project. Derek runs that program along with a 50/50 matching facade grant program where we'll match you dollar-for-dollar everything that you put in to invest. I know council hears a lot about landscaping requirements in the UEO, things that make our community way better but are expensive. Well, we can help match some of those requirements, especially in struggling areas like the Merkison Road area. So, what we would be doing, if you wanted to do it right now, is similar to what we did preparing for the Choice Grant. We have a retail market study. We know what type of retail it can support in this area. Moving into when we talk about after the Choice Grant gets awarded, that 12 to 18 months, that is to update that market study and target it for specific sites on the corridor. It is to work with people like Urban Strategies, who would be the consultant that we would bring in. And so, I apologize. I think my note on your council request tracker kind of got some things confused there between me answering the manager's office and then putting it down on paper and everything. So, we were bringing in Urban Strategies, who has a history of making development projects like this work in lower-income communities. And so, they are now onboard and part of our community and helping us when we win the Choice Grant.
Okay, so to move this along, we get the Choice Grant. All things work out well there. You're going to come back to council and say, this is the number-one thing that everyone asked for, some kind of grocery. Now that we have the grant, now that we have this, we would now need that last $1 million to make this $6 million investment towards something like this. Is that my understanding?
Yes, with the caveat that that $1 million investment is part of our annual allocation of federal funds, we would be prioritizing this project. And that's part of the next presentation as well.
Okay. And then, can you guys just get me that information on the consultant that was too expensive for us, just since you guys did that research? And I can answer to our community members who are interested in a co-op. And, you know, maybe that's not the most feasible direction to go to when we have these other options on the table?
So, like I said, unfortunately, that council request tracker thing, it said that we were looking at a consultant. That was bringing in the Urban Strategies folks. We have talked to some folks like retail strategies and marketing consultants about retail recruitment strategies. That is very pricey. I'm happy to give you their contact and information. But what they're looking to do is a lot different than what we're looking to do, which is a community-driven, community-led, small-scale neighborhood grocery store.
So, there was never any work done necessarily? Like, I know that Weaver Street Market in Carboro is very successful, you know? There's got to be somebody who helped put them all that together. You know, there are successful examples that exist. What is it about what they did? And can it be replicated if someone followed the recipe? Has any work gone into that? Because that was my request originally back in November.
It's income.
Okay.
And in Carboro and in Chapel Hill, you have a much more walkable and probably more so than drivable community. But we will get you that information. We will get you everything that we have.
Yep.
All right, and we don't need any action today. We just wanted to update on this, on where we are with this, waiting to hear when we hear about the Choice Grant.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, so council, move to 5.04.
All right, and so, this is my new assistant director, Alex Baker. He's been with the city about five years, just moved into this role. He has been through with the community for the past two months, presenting what you guys are about to see here. And we talked about moving very quickly. And then, the manager just said, don't take as long as Chris takes, so...
And he's still talking.
Yeah, so we'll get through it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and council. I trust I won't take, try your patience, as I won't take very long. I will breeze right through this. Okay. There we go. So, I'm here to talk to you this afternoon about CDBG Home and Hopewa. They are called our entitlements. We receive that money directly due to our size. Those fundings do come with strings. With CDBG, it has to be low income or reduced blight. Hopewa is for housing opportunities with people with AIDS. And then, Home, of course, is our home partnership, home investment partnership. So, how much money are we talking about? You can see here, generally, that has gone up year after year. As of this time, we do not have our official communication from HUD to tell us exactly how much. So, the budget that I'm going to show you and that you have in your packet is based on the current projecting level for this year. We do anticipate, however, a slight increase. When that comes back, we'll come back and let you know how that was appropriated as well. So, here's some anticipated resources. We're talking about $4.8 million when we look at Home, CDBG, and Hopewa. When we also look at their program income along with the match and some prior-year resources. So, I have been doing this now since November. We kicked off in November. We had nonprofits come. We focused those attentions on crime prevention and violence interruption, as well as homeless and mental health. Since that time, we have opened up our funding levels for those nonprofits to apply along those categories. We'll talk some more about that tonight. And then, in February, I began meeting throughout the city and sharing the budget and those requests. And so, now, after having that open for 30 days for the city residents to look at and make comments, it closed in the middle of March, March 17th. We're here with you tonight. So, there are a few caps, some things that we can't cross, such as in administration. We can't just give out all the money to nonprofits. And so, there's some caps on public services as much as we like to do homeless activities, mental health activities. Those activities do come with a cap, $277,000 and some change. You see that? The other cap I'd like to call your attention to is our CHODO, our Community Housing Development Organization, which you would know as Habitat. That is a minimum cap. That is not a maximum cap. All the other caps is a maximum. We cannot exceed that. That CHODO cap is a minimum. So, the minimum was $168,000. We're proposing $170,000 for Habitat. In our other recommendations, we're just going to do some broad categories for you. We're not going to get deep down into it. Economic development, some of that. We have shifted to ARPA, so there's a slight reduction, but you'll see a strong commitment to the economic development. Same thing with community development strategy, a huge increase, but that's because of our neighborhood resources increase. Housing strategy, we are maintaining that. We have found a way to do some residual funds with our homebuyer programs with some of those. And then, our special needs. And then, so that basically held a net change. There was no change in this budget for those services. With our home recommendation, again, I talked about the $170,000. We are seeing a slight dip in our housing, affordable housing development due to receiving some less the way we do some accounting change, less program income. We are no longer recommending that we do projected income, program income with our budget, but recognizing that when it is earned and received. Administration and planning, again, remains the same. Same thing with Hopewa. We have taken out $200,000 to place in a trust fund to help secure units and build affordable units. That's one thing we've heard, that there's a shortage in... That's one thing we've heard, that there's a shortage in units. So we're proposing $200,000 to do some affordable housing develop. They're currently just spend on that mark that we're proposing, so we feel that's enough to cover services. I'd like to talk to you in a minute. We just closed last week on our applications for LI-Tech, or Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Applications, which are due with the state very soon. And so we have four proposals that we'd like to make you aware of. And so here are those proposals, and the numbers of units, and the total development costs that are currently going to be submitted for our community, typically two or three of these. We just wanted you to be aware of that and let you know that we are looking to support these in their efforts to bring affordable housing in our community with low-income tax credits. These are the locations of those, so you could know where they're at within the city. I do need to advise you of a substantial amendment. Again, this goes back to no longer counting projected income from a rental development into it is received. In this last past year, we counted $380,000 as program income, anticipating that someone would pay that off. We made you aware of that. You agreed to push that out and secure additional units. That was the good thing. That delay in payment kept units on the market for another 10, 20 years. And so, but we do need to let people know that we extended that loan, and so we had counted that as the income in our previous-year budget. And so we need to let people know that we will not be receiving that. And so that did change our annual budget for the current year that we're in. So the key takeaways is we've done a few streamlining, particularly with the grant application. We've held two pre-application workshops, you heard about that, mental health and homelessness, as well as youth violence and gun interruption. We also increased engagement by our social media presence and the use of constant contact. We'll continue to develop single-family and do gap financing for multifamily, particularly with a focus on having low-income tax credits. And we are beginning to work with Section 108 to help spur the economic development that y'all talked about just briefly before me. So after today, we'll come back again around April 22nd and ask that you hold a public hearing on this, so that we can adopt the budget and send that to HUD before our May 15th deadline. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir, Councilmember here.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Thank you and our economic team for just going all across the city in our community meetings, at least in my District 4 community meetings, and letting folk know about so many different housing and apartment-type opportunities. What my question was, because I see sometimes not the type of large group of folk going back signing your cards or signing your rosters and whatnot for those evenings, what type of participation are we having? What kind of follow-up are you having from? How well is that turning out from our citizens?
Sure, we had more than 70 citizens engaged with us this year through our process. Our citizen engagement, that's slightly up. We continue to grow year over year, and we look forward to having a higher number next year. But we did have 70 individuals engaged throughout the city.
Now, as far as I can remember, this is our first time doing this, right? So you have... Please correct me, because I don't remember. I won't say that.
ADOF did this before me.
Okay.
So I know that this is something that the city has been doing for a while.
So we're going to take this throughout the year?
We do this every November. We start in November. These meetings normally occur February and March for 30 days to engage, because we have to submit those comments with HUD.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job in those presentations.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your support and being there that night.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, council, any other questions for Mr. Baker? All right, great job. We look forward to the adoption and getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, moving to item 5.05. Oh, yeah, 5.04 Alpha. Mr. Thompson.
Heimer?
Yes, it ain't going to take that long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. This is my council's request, and I'm seeking your support in trying to change the Code of Ordinance for Chapter 16, the removal of vehicle and private property or junked from public nuisance or abandoned vehicles. This is an effort to get large buses, buses off of property that creates property value decreases and a nuisance for the entire community. I'm asking that the city attorney and staff come back to us properly at a next work session to give us the definition of exactly what they would look at. It has a lot to do with vehicle axles and weights and everything else in order to get this done. This is only for buses, not for recreational vehicles, not for trailers, not for RVs, not for boats. So I'm seeking your consensus. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, any questions? I know we talked to Councilmember Thompson about this, and so I know we had kind of an extensive ordinance change a couple of years back, but this is specifically for school-type, commercial-type buses, is that right? Large-passenger vehicles?
School buses.
School buses specifically, okay.
Specifically.
All right, council, any other questions, comments? Councilmember here.
I'm looking forward to see what this vote looks like for us to give that support. I've had that same concern over the years. I've got people that have buses parked in their front yards that use them as homes. They're actually the school bus, the yellow bus, and I haven't been able to get it, get them moved. They're not junked or pushed in the bushes. They're just, they're using them. So that was all. I'd just like to see how this goes.
So is there a motion to move that forward?
I made the motion, Mr. Mayor. I just need a second.
He made the motion.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Thompson's the motion. This is the second about Councilmember Green. Discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for action on that. We hadn't voted in so long. We've got to get back warmed up.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be excused after this.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, we need all votes, guys. It's only six. Councilman McNair, what you doing?
Thank you, council.
Oh, oh, so let's vote to formally excuse you. If not, everything's an affirmative issue, and we're unexcused.
Okay.
Y'all all right over there? All right, so the motion to excuse Councilmember... All right, motion by Councilmember here is the second. Second by Councilmember Green. Discussion. All right, those in favor, let's take the vote. See you later, sir. All right, all right. I know that's right. All right, so moving to item 5.05, enforcement of city-initiated demolition liens. Hey, sir.
Yes, sir. Let's see here. Is it up there? Oh, okay, so I have to start talking and then it will start? Okay, that's it. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Paul Allen. I'm with the City Attorney's Office, here to talk to you briefly about enforcement of city-initiated demolition liens. This comes to you as a follow-up from an admin report that you got back in February regarding the outstanding liens that we have, and the purpose of this presentation is to inform you as to just some general knowledge regarding liens, explain the enforcement mechanisms which we have available to us legally to collect the amounts owed, and to seek general input regarding the enforcement. So what is a lien? Sorry about that. Hear me now?
Better, yes.
Is it not? My bad. Can you come get this in presentation mode? I'm sorry. Thank you. So what is a lien? A lien is a qualified right in the property of the creditor over specific property and the debtor, and is a security for debt or charge for the performance of some act. In the case of the city, we would be the creditor here. The debtor is a property owner, and the act, as it mentions below, and how do these come into existence, is that the city has taken some action in the form of a nuisance abatement or demolition of an unsafe structure, and the property owner has not reimbursed the city. I do not know why it's giving me issues. Of course it is. And as a result of this, there's an automatic lien by statute. That's what I'm doing. Apparently. A lien is automatically created by statute as a result of those expenses that are expended due to the demolition or nuisance abatement. So how are those liens able to be collected? They're, well, they're automatically created as a lien against the real property, and the nuisance abatement, just a nuance between the two, is that nuisance abatements are collected as taxes, and demolition costs are collectible as special assessments. So there are four enforcement methods by which we can legally enforce these liens. One is debt set-off, two is a civil lawsuit for claims under $10,000, so that's essentially small claims court, foreclosure, and wage garnishment. This is also a good time for me to make sure and mention as well that because of the difference in factors in these, and every property's different, every case is going to be different, it's going to be the City Attorney's Office discretion as far as which of these mechanisms we use going forward. Again, factor-dependent, case-by-case basis-dependent. One of the factors, though, that is important in this, as far as the hierarchy that we have for disclosure today, is the ballpark figures for an approximate cost. Wage garnishment is going to be the least expensive at $20, which is just to cover the cost of notices. Debt set-off will be $120 approximately for the cost of a hearing officer for a meeting that may take place or may not, cost of notices and other statutory costs. Civil lawsuits, again, mentioned, that would be small claims court, and that's going to be $120 or more, and that's going to be a culmination of the cost of the filing fee, as well as cost to service to any and all defendants. And then the last lien will be foreclosure, which is going to be between approximately $2,500 to $4,000. And important to note as well is that if, out of all of these, foreclosure is the only one which may, well, which would wind up with the city taking ownership of such property. With that, I will answer any questions you may have.
All right, so I know this was an item that I kind of had a lot of interest in. So it shows we've got about $1 million roughly sitting out there. The time constraints on being able to enforce that, did you cover that?
I did not cover that, but that has a 10-year statute of limitations for both special assessment aspect as well as tax assessment.
So are these enforceable that you've attached to this? Are these all within that 10-year timeframe?
No, not all. As far as the admin report that I believe you're referencing from February, I think those were broken down into three separate categories. You had some that were from recent up to five years. Oh, and I should mention, too, that I believe that that report was as of December 2023, so some of that could be updated now that we're in April. But we had a range from zero to five years, a range from five to 10 years, and 10 years and over. So any better 10 years and less will be able to proactively engage and enforce.
So that's some of your salary increases there, huh? All right, any other question?
Mayor Kovan, if I may add, though we wouldn't be able to proactively collect, if their property is sold, we are able to recover our fees that way. But we can't take any action against them after 10 years.
The older ones.
Right, after 10 years, we still can collect if their property is sold.
As they do with title search, they'll pick up the city's owed.
Right, as long as we renew it after the 10 years. But we can't collect it, like file an action to collect.
Gotcha, okay. All right, council, any other comments, questions? Do you need any action from us at this time? All right, thank you. I don't see any questions. Councilmember Green, you had something? You look like... Okay.
So many questions that I don't want to spend time asking today.
All right, moving to item 5.06, Code Enforcement Times Report. Okay. Good evening, sir.
Oh, certainly. Give me one second to get this up. Good morning, or good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. James Rutherford, Housing and Code Enforcement Division Manager. I have with me today Daniel West, Code Enforcement Supervisor, Derek Planter, Code Enforcement Supervisor, Alex Magana is our Development Center Manager, and of course David Steymanz, our Development Services Assistant Director, and of course Dr. Newton in the rear of the room. We have an update for you on... Excuse me, on the Code Enforcement Compliance Times. This has been running since last year. We've presented to you in October during a council work session. The council had a number of items they wanted answers on or updates on. The first one was on some raw data for customer service surveys. That was produced and provided to the manager's office. We have a current update on that that's available, if you want to have that. Alex Magana can present that here. And that also rolls into number two, having third-party customer service surveys. Alex can speak to that as well. We had a council member ask about how can we help people that need assistance with property maintenance or who can't afford to do property maintenance issues? We put together a listing of partner agencies and ECD, and that listing is part of your CCAM. We provide that regularly to people who are needing assistance or who they say they can't afford to do things. And we really reach out, we try and guide them without leading them, if that's the way to put it, because all we can do is kind of give them the resources and hopefully they can overcome their financial issues. There was a question as to can we bundle the demolitions to decrease the backlog? That was brought up. There were some difficulties with doing that. There's a chart in here. We're going to show that here in a few minutes as to why we wouldn't want to bundle. The biggest reason, of course, is that each demolition project has to be considered its own, on its own merits, and charged to the property as an assessment on its own merits. So bundling it together would kind of dilute that water and not give us a true value for the assessment. We asked, we were asked, how can we help people that are being taken advantage of by handymen and contractors? We regularly work with permitting and inspections. They provide information to the Department of Insurance. We pass along information to the Police Department for fraud investigations. And typically, it's after the fact that we find out about this. But that's what we do with the people that are needing help in those areas. We were asked to differentiate our staff for our codes versus what's required by the state. We provided a chart with that. That's here. We provided a chart with that, that's here following. And then lastly, how do we get our money back? And of course, the city attorney's office just talked about how we can get our money back on the demos. These are some of the citizen resources. We have a lot of member agencies here that are in the, in the city, Habitat for Humanity, Fable Economic Community Development, Urban Ministries, Action Pathways, Council on Older Adults, and there's just numerous ones here, Legal Aid, Catholic Charities, and Rebuild NC. The bundling demo issues, this is a chart that kind of demonstrates how the bundling of, of, let's say, six different demolitions, if we lumped them all together, how it could go sideways against a lowest bottom line and also the lowest cost for each individual property owner. So you can see there, there's different scenarios for four different contractors there. The yellow represents the low bidder and if you pile all the low bidders together, you can see that it, they all come in at 37.9, but if you bundled it, the lowest bidder in this particular scenario was 43.5. So that's actually an excess increase of $5,600. And then, and all but one of those projects, you see, the property owners would not take the advantage of or get the advantage of having the lowest bid. So example, it's Project A there, you see the low bid was 3,500, but if we bundled it, it'd be 5,500 being charged because of the way the bids worked out. Compliance times required, this is the chart, shows all the different number of days. This was an option that council wanted to look at as far as things we could have looked into doing as far as reducing from 10 business days down to 10 calendar days or 10, or eight business days. That's one of the things council has an interest in. And then also lumping together the abatement of properties and the siding of properties without the first issuance of the NOV, that's a consideration. And then the administrative fee, the code allows us, it's a caveat that where you can charge an admin fee on all properties that are not in compliance, whether you cite them or whether you abate them or not. And then the compliance times, removing extensions, which is very much politically driven policy decision. Some of the things we have done to reduce compliance times, reducing from discovery to action, we used to wait 60 days, now we're taking a action after about two weeks as soon as we can get the title search request to our paralegals and the real estate office, they'll give us back the owner of the property and we can start that, the ball rolling. Eliminating extensions after councils approve the ordinance, pending funding, that's the only thing typically that's holding us up is whether or not we have the money to do the project. And then whether or not they're still working on it or have permits on it, those are ones we're still rolling forward with. We reduced the hearing order, compliance times since October. We've had 23 hearing orders. Out of those 23, 21 of those have been capped at the minimum 60 days that the state requires. We've only had two that were over that. These are some of the items that have not been acted upon or approved and that's advertising of all the notices and additional staffing and resources. One of the key things I'd like to point out is that we're over 1,200 dangerous and blighted building cases. Last year about this time, we had about 150 to 170 open cases. In October, we had 130 and with the working staff and us just chipping away at it, we're down to 117 open dangerous and blighted building cases. And if you look at the timelines of those, you can see 84 of those, 117 are under a year. So we're really tightening the belt on those. We also have been using all our money and we've been instilling the help of Economic Community Development. They've been very helpful with us getting a lot of projects done. We've done 10 with the general fund money and we're looking to do 18 this fiscal year with ECD's money. There's some charts there, you can see graphically kind of the number of projects and the money funding. One of the things that is kind of notable is that in the orange there, that area is, those are projects that are pending funding that we need funds for and the gray is our projects that are anticipated that we could do between now and the end of the fiscal year. So it's a pretty big gap there. Just some influencing factors on a cleaner city. We're coordinating with other departments. We have the Rapid Team for the city, which has nothing to do with Development Services, but they're, they're a big part because we coordinate with them with solid waste changes and leveraging other resources to get the demos done. Let's see. We've been pushing the property owners to really either repair or get their buildings tore down out of the 97 demos last year, 80 of them were done by the property owners. This is a calendar year. And then there's a few other items.
Was that the end?
Sir?
Was that the end? What happened to the, oh, you skipped the slide, okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just trying to economize on time for, for council. We have the dashboard, of course, going with availability of current violations. The Rapid Team's grown. Solid waste changes last year where they're now picking up curbside debris every two weeks. That's helping. And then of course our changes with our dangerous building processes. And that's the update.
All right, thank you. Sir, Councilmember here.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. As we, if you go back to slide 14, please, one of my big issues is this item. I may have brought it forward some time ago on what we could do to shorten the compliance time on getting whatever done that may be in violation. Because a lot of times when me personally, I've made a complaint that the resident thinks that it hadn't been made because there's such a long period of time. So give me, when you say that from the 10 business days, let me see, how was I reading that? Okay, the 10 business days to the 10 calendar days, that means if you're saying that, to change the ordinance for compliance, oh, from the 10 business day, okay, so when you're saying the 10 calendar day, that means you're going to include Saturday and Sunday?
Correct, sir.
Correct.
That's an option for council.
Yeah, well, I like that option to, something to help shorten that period of time. So I, I, I can support that. Where are we? We put an ordinance together a little while ago about a timeframe that was put on boarded up buildings.
Yes, sir.
And my, my concern and even some of council members' concerns at time that we were discussing this, where were we? How would we implement the existing buildings that were already boarded up whenever the ordinance came in?
That, that was a, right, that was part of the ordinance. It, it gave them a, for existing buildings, it gave them a timeframe to comply with the registration requirements.
And Mr. Here, what we can do, I'm remembering that as well. I think with Dr. Newton, it was 10 or 12 properties that, it was some number that were, were kicking.
Right, that number were smaller.
Right.
Compared to some, some that were already boarded up.
Yes, sir.
While we were trying to implement the new ordinance.
You remember exactly. And so we, if we can get talk and we can get that back out to you with a list of those addresses and what the clock is left on those properties. But I think you, you're remembering exactly as I did as well.
So tonight, are we looking to, what are we looking to do? This is just a report, so we're not looking to take any action?
The main takeaway for me was when we went from the 1,100 dangerous buildings down to 117, what was it?
We're 117 now.
117. The work that y'all have done in the past and staff is paying off. We're getting these dangerous buildings down. The compliance times is always a challenge, but we, with the two supervisors we have here and with Rapid, so we're hitting them, hitting people from every angle and we're also trying to give them resources. The downside is, is that you have some people who may not have the means to get it done within a compliance time period, but for those who we, you go out and you talk to, they actually I think are trying to comply, but we do have some of those in every district here that just linger and linger and linger.
And I'm, I'm 100% with that, I'm 100% in doing all that we can to support some of our property owners that may not be able to, be able to do things as quick or to afford. But my concern is then what do we do if we offer some form of help, whatever those helps are, and support? Because I, I personally in District Four and others may have that too, that's been going, ongoing for years on particular properties and we haven't, haven't had any success. It's just going on for years, especially some of those that, that I was just speaking up that, that have been boarded up within the time that we came up with the new, I think it's some form, I think it was three or four-year ordinance.
And Mr. Here, what we can do on one of those slides, you actually have reducing compliance times, if the council's interest is, if you take, can you pop that up, James?
This is the three slide, yeah.
If we can, well, it's one that actually, 14. We can look to bring back to council, if that's y'all's interest, any ordinance amendments that would be necessary to facilitate that for you to consider formally at a meeting?
Or that's, I'm, I'm fine with that, or could we also just say if that's something that the individual council members also could look at and shoot those emails to you? Because one of the big items in just in this group has, for me, has been how can we some way speed up that compliance time? Because it looks like sometimes it can go on and on. All right, thank you, sir.
It can. And just an interesting stat, we have 1,330 open cases today. And just to put that in perspective for you, we, we open about 1,150 to 1,200 cases every month. So we're opening 1,200 and, you know, so at any given time, you know, you have to have open cases, but you can, you can put that in perspective. It's, in years past, it's been over 2,000, so we're, you know.
A lot of it has to do with that compliance time.
We're chipping away.
Well, yeah, and before you, before you go, thank, thank you, Councilmember here. So, yes, I do want to say thank you to you guys for, you're doing a great job. One of the things that stuck out was the amount of code violation cases we have compared to peer cities. And I think that you guys do so much with, you know, with the staff size we have to do that many cases, you know, 1,100, 2,000 in a, in a month. But one of the things that I'm looking at here, there are 27 different violation possibilities for a sign. Do we need that many? I mean, that, that's the kind of stuff that generates the calls when they get a nice nasty, when they get, you got to comply, I mean, because that's antagonistic to me that you got 27 different things that trigger a sign. One, it increases these guys' workload. Two, it is not saying we're open for business here, it's saying that we're complicated. So touch that a little bit for.
Yes, we can. If you are looking at the compliance times from Code 1-22-2024 on the Excel spreadsheet, you could consolidate all of that down into saying signed code violations. Because whether or not it's a sign novelty or an obscene sign or a sign obstructing motorists, it is still a visit that the staff would have to take. And so it reads as 27 different items, but really they, those are all sign codes.
Well, that's where I'm going with it. When do we say that it was not okay to do, you know, I've had this about the feather sign. When, when do we say it was not okay to have, you know, temporary special side advertising permit required, that kind of, yeah, I understand, but, but, and as we, as we look at that, it, it may be time to reconsider, just like we retool everything else. When this document was created in 07, 08, that was one world. I mean, now we are showing that it would be a little bit more extensive. So I think that, that's the conversation that I would like to.
One of the first times that you and I worked together was on the corridor committee and you were the chair of the corridor committee. And we actually were called, had a presentation looking down Rayford Road, looking down Sky Bow and looking down other roads at where you could almost tell where you were because you had flags, American flags on every antenna. You had push signs in front of every business. And this is all, this is all council's choice as to what you want your community to look like. But it's really hard to recall for some who may not have been in the space before what those corridors look like. Now, the feather signs, I think we, or other, other types of things, going out of business or opening up a new business, but those are movement signs and that was a conscious choice that council made and past councils made, but if the council now wants to do something different, we absolutely stand ready. But though, it, it was an awful lot of work for those who were here and, I mean, an awful lot of work to get the corridors to the point that they are now. And it is, again, I'm saying it again, it was an insane amount of work to get the corridors to the way they look now. We have, when people come to our city, they come down and said, I thought this was, was supposed to be a bad area. This is Merkison Road. Mr. Here and I joke about it all the time, in the 20 years I've been here, how we have cleaned up these corridors. But again, it's council's choice. Now, I would just say that if we want to look at, if council wants us to look at something where you have an opening or a closing, and I think we have signage permitted for that if I'm not mistaken, and we can definitely come back and present that to council and if y'all would like for us to adjust it up or down, we're happy to do it. But this is one of the, I think, huge successes of the UDO is cleaning up these.
Well, no, no doubt. UDO has provided a better-looking community. What I'm saying is, you know, government doesn't always have to go from one extreme to the far end of the spectrum. I think there are some here that, that we could probably consolidate. Just as a business person, you don't know that there are 27 different things you can't do until somebody stops by there and writes you a ticket. And that takes time away from these guys and some, some of the other stuff, obviously I'm not talking about that, but I just think that there's time to probably relook at this because it's been a decade or plus, so. But Mr. Hondros, you had your light lit and you're also the chairman of UDO, so maybe that's something you can.
I was just going to say, that's something we can add to the list if you wanted to look at that, Mr. Mayor. Also on, can we put up slide 18 real quick? That's the current dangerous building statistics. So we have 117 currently, I think, Mr. Hewitt, you said that was over 1,000 a few years back. So obviously we want that to be, what's that?
1217.
1217. Okay, there it is up there. So obviously we want that to be zero, but I think the ones that jump out to me are the 11 that are 24-plus months and then the 22 just above that that are 12-plus months. So that's, quick math, roughly 30% of the 117. What's going on with those 33 or at least the 11 that are over 24 months? I mean, I know each case is different, but.
It's mostly attributed to funding.
Gotcha.
I mean, we have, it's funding or it's an example of our, our beloved 401 Johnson Street, you know, the, the blue apartments, you know, it's, this takes time and time and time to, to get these things. But we have a demo permit about to be issued on it and the second contractor, third contractor, excuse me, teed up to, to get rid of that place.
Because I think for me, you know, the Because I think for me, you know, the ones that are most egregious that have been there for the longest time, those are the most critical mass. And then, you know, the others, zero to six months, six to 12 months, I mean, sometimes it does take time to get a building back up. So if they're making progress, I'm not as excited. But if we can focus on those 33, I think that's a huge progress.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hare?
Okay, yes, sir. You almost said something, you were saying something I didn't quite get the clarity to. But if you look on, well, there's no numbers on these. I guess this is 15, number 15, though it doesn't say number 15. But dangerous building cases, opportunities, the last one, taking action notwithstanding issue, issue permits and ongoing work. And it gave two examples of two that happened to have been in District 4, explaining that.
Okay, so these are properties that had building permits issued. A 528 person actually had plans or a portion of plans presented for review. But this was one of the deals where, on each one of these, where it had been ongoing and ongoing. And finally, it was time for them to no longer receive any extra time. So Colton Street had a building renovation permit. Johnson Street has had numerous building permits, but the problem is they weren't following through. They weren't bringing it to a close. They weren't getting inspections passed. They weren't making suitable substantial progress. You know, because, you know, we're here to work with people, but, you know, these people were not doing, you know, good faith efforts. Person Street actually sold, the person bought the property in that condition, knowing that it was a dangerous building. You know, and I think, yeah, that happens a lot. And it was time to go. And that Person Street area is being revitalized. There's a lot of money being spent down there. And I see that being one of the key spots that someone's gonna scoop up and put something nice on it.
All right. Thank you. Council moving to 5.07. Ms. Keisha, the real estate guru. All right.
Good evening.
Waiting on this.
Yes. Good evening. Yeah. So at your last council meeting, I had an administrative report on the agenda for surplus property because I have been asked for that for quite some time. And it has taken a lot of time to go through all of the assets that the city owns as far as land is concerned. Before we get into it, though, I do just want to do a quick rundown of how the surplus property policy works. The city does not generally have surplus property because when we purchase property, it is for a project. Having said that, over the years, some of the projects have not come to fruition, but we do still have the property. The things to take into consideration on surplus property, if it is declared surplus by council, the process is, we perform a title search on that property because some of it's fairly old. We have to determine through finance how that property was purchased. If it is purchased with certain funds, then there are specifics as to if we can sell it or how we sell it or what it can be used for. Specifically on a lot of the ECD funds that they have, we have property, you all may remember FEMA. We purchased property with FEMA funds over on Louise Street and a couple of other places. We can never sell those properties and they cannot be developed. So there are restrictions placed on a lot of our property to where we have to keep them in municipal ownership and we can't sell them. Also, general statute determines how we sell property. So some property that we have condemned, there's cases where we may have to offer that back to the people that we condemned to see if they would like to purchase it. They would have to purchase it for what fair market value is. That is another problem that we have had in the past when we have had surplus property and we put it out advertised to sell. We have to sell property for the fair market value because we're stewards of public money, so we can't give people a deal on it. And then what happens is we put that out for bid, we pay the money to advertise everything and then we don't get any bids because nobody really wants to pay fair market value. And with that, I just wanted to be here to answer any questions you all might have about the surplus property and get some feedback.
Well, I did. And I appreciate this. And I know that, you know, obviously, this is quite an extensive piece of work that you've been working on, so I appreciate that. Now, as you started this off, most of these properties are in red. At what point do we determine, or who makes the determination, that these are city-needed? Like you said, that sometimes it's acquired for a specific purpose that never comes to fruition. I'm specifically speaking of certain things that, you know, if it's providing a city service or it's a function of the city government, I'm certainly not talking about that. But these subsequent properties that certain departments have acquired over the years, who made the decision, which council made the decision, that they're gonna keep or not keep this? Because this really, you know, if you're redlining as to everything staff says is needed, I mean, you're not giving the policy board opportunity to say that it's not needed if it's not funded tied to it. So maybe that may be a manager question.
I'll start on some of it, but I'm gonna lean on Michelle. I can't buy property without council approval.
Right.
So my authority to get rid of a property only comes from council approval. And until you tell me that the purpose for what we bought it for is no longer needed, then that dictates that it is available for surplus. So until you tell me that, for instance, issues the Center City Business Park, that's one of the largest tracks that you're on here. We bought it for a particular purpose. Now that we have it, there may be new purposes which come up, which we may be, or attempt to bring to council at some point in time. But that is where the authority comes from, is when, and until such time as the property or the purpose is no longer there, then we would, that's the decisions that we make when we're talking back to citizens or others who call and ask us about it. And looking at the property, I had a conversation, can't remember exactly who it was, with council. But we went into these properties with a strategy, each one of them. And if council at whatever time or however you'd like for us, if that purpose is no longer there, we would ask you to consider having an exit strategy for that as well. We have spent the better part of 12 years and think one part on Blunt Street, we acquired in 2001 or 2004 from an estate, I think it was 410 Blunt Street. We've held on to that almost over 20 years. That was even before the Hope Six Project. One of the things that I think that the council's been fairly clear about in some of the decisions that y'all have made have been that you don't want a proliferation of vape shops, you don't want a proliferation of Dollar Trees, Dollar Stores and everything like that. And so at whatever time that we're able to dispose of the property, and Keisha is expert in telling us how we'd go about that as well, I would just ask that council, we give some consideration of how that looks so that we aren't necessarily putting something back in the community that you may not want. But that's the authority.
Can I, I want to say something about, specifically about City Center Business Park. Also, keep in mind for ones like City Center Business Park or Cat's Eye, I don't think I marked either one of those on the list. What you would need to do before you got rid of City Center Business Park, in my opinion, would be you would need to recombine it and make it one parcel because it has more value that way than if you sell it. Currently, all of these are lots, which is why it looks like we have so many because when we buy like Senior Center East, which is like, say, maybe 23 lots, it's still 23 parcel numbers even though it's one big parcel. The same way with our Parks and Rec stuff is the same way. So although it looks like a lot, they don't just recombine them at the county level.
So what I had in mind, the reason we asked for this, we have to grow the tax base. We had a consultant that came in a few years back that told us there was too much government on property that's, and nonprofit property is not paying taxes. And we see that we're a large population, but we have a relatively small budget compared to that. I mean, just to give you an idea of some of the other communities, you know, Durham, ironically, the example that my colleague likes to use a lot, $600 million budget. And they only have maybe 50,000 or 60,000 more people up until recently. But, you know, as we look at this, council, I think we have to, some communities like Durham, at some point, determine which properties they wanted, they put a RFP out. And like you said, combining property, people come in and buy it and give projects. City always has a discretion whether to approve zoning and to control what you don't want. We don't have any control now for what's happening. I saw a barber shop that had been in existence for a while on Ramsey Street. There's now a tobacco vape shop that, you know. So I don't think that that can be, you know, not taking advantage and putting some of this back on the taxpayer payroll based on what might happen and what could happen, I think is short-sighted. If any of these projects have budget and have been talked about in the last five or 10 or 15 years, some of them have plans to go back farther than that, I just think it's time to relook at that because it's not doing the city any good to hold these and not receive any revenue. You know, empty lots, vacant lots and things like that. There's an empty lot off of Blunt Street, ironically, that these guys, the True Value Store, asked to buy it for extra parking. We had dirt put on it. We're not taking care of the lot. It's overgrown. We would be fined if this was a Person's lot. And we were told, they totally couldn't sell it because it wasn't surplus property. And we're not doing anything with that, nor any development plans because it's on the opposite side of the street from the other property that they have. So we should not be the largest landowner in some of these places and not have a plan to get this back on the tax roll. And that's why I asked to bring it back. I hope that we can look at that. What I was, you know, Ms. Keisha and Mr. Manager was looking for a little bit more of a refined detail because this is kind of a lot of information dump, as to what things have been on for maybe more than 10 years that we had no plans or no budget for, and maybe put a specific category for that so that we can make a better decision.
I do have on the list the date everything was acquired.
Okay.
So that's on the list. Also, what I tried to do on each one of these, which is what took so long, is going through and determining what we purchased it for. And I tried to give a little information, like for example, all the ones that the airport purchased, they can't be sold because of the funding that the airport used to buy those. So I tried to mark those. Now, to answer your question as to why they're red, the process is the asset is the sponsor, is who the asset is held by which department. Those departments were contacted and asked, do you have a valid project for this? Do you want to keep it? What are you using it for? Can it be determined surplus? With that, that's why.
What is the current project? And this is just giving this for example. For the Blue Street, two lots that were acquired in the 70s. I'm not familiar with a project that we're doing at Blue Street. But those are the kinds of things that I'm saying the council may need to take a look at. But I'll look through this. I don't want to belabor the meeting today. I'll look through this and send back some questions for a little bit more specifics on it. But I appreciate you did a great.
And Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we can do now that the list is compiled, sometimes the answer may be no, but we, for the properties that we have on the list that there was no stated purpose or need for them, we can always start publishing those lists as well and see if there are any takers or interested parties. And if they were, they would just contact, right?
I have that list too.
Yeah.
That one's on there. That's the surplus list that's blue. Those are the properties that were determined were not needed that could be declared surplus and sold.
Right. So we don't need council action just to post that list and to be able to then start seeing if there are interest. From time to time, someone will look through our property list and will find a parcel somewhere and will build a house. We had one, I always get the address wrong. It was off of Village Drive somewhere in that area.
Oh, I don't even remember. We just looked at it too. What will happen in that case is each one will be brought separately back to council because the only thing that I was not able to determine on every one is what financing was used for each one.
Okay.
So I have to double-check and make sure that we're allowed to sell with whatever funding we used to purchase.
Gotcha. Okay. Council, any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Council, moving to the council member requests. As you know, these are five-minute presentations starting with 5.08. 5.011 has been already previously heard. And so this is a time where the council member will make a case for support to get staff engaged in a more detailed level. So with that, I will start with item number one, which is, Councilmember McNair, you up?
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, Jesus. Jesus gone home, man.
He's always looking for him, so.
We all are looking for him all the time.
Okay. All right. My ask is today is that we have, that we remove the fare for fast fixed route service for elderly and disabled resident in order to make this valuable service more accessible to this population of our city. To mention that Vision, the Vision Resource Center, which is located in District 2, has personally asked for these services to be dismissed so that they can have free passes to maneuver throughout the city and take care of their business.
So I did have a couple of questions.
Oh, yeah. One more thing.
Oh.
You wanna know what?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, okay. My ask is, I'm asking for consensus to allow staff to evaluate the budget impact of removing fares for elderly and differently able-bodied riders.
Okay. So I did have a couple of questions. I like the the thought behind it, right? But transit is an enterprise fund that never collects enough. So the jump fund always supplements. So I just want to know what type of budgetary impact would that be? Would want to, you know, always want to see what we can do for the savings if there's any other dollars since that's a kind of a defined population that might help offset that. And two, are we prepared to raise the fares for the rest of it to keep the enterprise balanced? You know, because it's a fund that has to be balanced at the end, in and of itself. So just kind of wanted to know, you know, but I guess those are questions staff could answer if there's a consensus to hear about it. Yes, Mayor?
Oh. There is a consensus here that it's important to note that any action council would take would be dependent upon a fair equity analysis that we would have to have done. We're in the process of hiring consultants to perform such analysis now. But we cannot, for our train of business, we cannot change our fares without that equity analysis information.
All right. So I did have, thank you. Councilmember Benevente, Hare, and?
That's it. Well, based on Assistant City Manager Olivera's comments, can we just make a motion that in that consultant's analysis, it include a page related to Councilmember McNair's request? And that way, we'll get that information before we take any further action? And that'll be the motion?
I mean, doesn't, does the analysis, is that a special service we're gonna have to ask for? Or does it analyze that anyway?
So we can make sure that they capture that. Usually, it's kind of a broad-based thing that says if you do these, if you stop-start specific routes and services, additionally, if you change an incremental fare. So it'll look at 25 cents and then 50 cents and then a dollar. But we could certainly make sure that they capture the equity impact of reducing those fares altogether. It is also important, I'd like to mention that whenever we reduce fares for any segmented population, and we saw this definitely during COVID when we were free fare for everyone, it increases our ridership. So it, not only does it decrease our fare revenue, but it increases our expenditures. So you're getting hit on both sides of that income and expenditure statement. The one you want to go up is going down and then the one you want to come down is going up. But that would be part of the equity analysis too. And staff's analysis of the cost.
All right. Councilmember Hare?
I think, thank you, Mayor. I like this, as I told the council lady earlier when she sent it out and while she and I have been sitting together this evening. But I do like what I just heard from our assistant manager. So I think that's, that analogy that's gonna come in is gonna really, really help. analogy that's going to come in is going to really, really help us. We are decreasing on one and then we're going up on another within a department that doesn't, can't pay for itself anyway. We've always had very difficulties in transit. But I do like what we can extend to do some great help for our seniors. I think several of you all around this table are seniors. I haven't gotten there yet, but-
Speak, please, sir, sir. All right. So, real quickly, we'll go to Councilmember Banks with Law Fund and Mayor Pro Tim. Then we got to take action, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question to staff, with our paratransit, is there a fee or is that free?
Our paratransit service does cost and we do absolutely have to maintain a cost for that. It is our most expensive form of transit as it is on demand. So, that would be something that I would strongly recommend that we not try to reduce. As far as the disability portion of it, there's certain requirements that FTA holds us to ensure that folks who are using that paratransit service, that they truly are disabled, that they are not able to use our fixed route service. Because it is such a high-cost service and it is so specific. We pick you up at wherever you are and we take you to exactly where you want to go. So, in order to qualify for that and even be able to utilize it and pay the fare, you have to assert that, for whatever reason, you are not able to use our fixed route service.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Mayor Pro Tim.
So, I have a question and I'm a little taken back that the Vision Resource Center is the one that came to you because I know that we have an agreement with the county. And I don't know if that has stopped. I think that we need to make sure that we are knowledgeable of that because the way it was, was government money, it was federal money that was coming down to us. And if we got the federal money, it would cost us out of our pocket like $60,000. But if the county got it, it would cost like $7,000. So, I think we need to-
And they wouldn't pay it.
I think we need to make sure that-
And they didn't pay it.
We paid the $7,000. We paid it for them because they refused to do it. So, we have to be very, we talk about watching our money. We need to make sure that that is still in effect. And if it's not in effect, we have to come back and have the conversation.
All right.
Thank you.
So, Council, time on this item is up. I think the Councilmember Benevente's motion was to make sure that the analysis includes this information and then we can take further action. Councilmember McNair, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, sir.
All right. All right. So, Council, we'll take a vote, consensus vote to do that real quick so it's official. Those in favor of that?
Three and a half minutes over.
Thank you, Mario. Appreciate the time keeping.
What does that mean?
Only have two minutes for my second one?
All right.
Only have two minutes for my second one?
All right. Yes, ma'am. So, give Mario back his three minutes.
Okay, my second request is that I would like to ask Mr. Robert Van Gens of the FCE EDC to present information to Council about benefits of recruiting a amusement park developer to build an amusement park in the city. Actually, I, we have, yeah, we talked about this during our strategic planning meeting. But however, I've been talking to him now for about six months and he's been doing research as well. And it's something that the mayor has interest in as well, not just the Ferris wheel. So, my ask is, I'm seeking consensus to allow Mr. Van Gens to give a presentation at the May work session about the benefits of recruiting an amusement park developer to the city.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify something. I mean, look, when I said it, it was kind of laughed on about the Ferris wheel thing. But I mean, if anybody's visited Atlanta or some of these places with a skyline and see how that adds to it, it doesn't take up a lot of space. It's not very expensive to operate. I mean, that could be a consideration before you go into a full-scale, you know, theme park. But I'm all for any amenity added. So, I just want to clarify that. But maybe if you could consider, before I go to Councilmember Benevente, you know, we've got Robo trying to close some employer, major employer deals. Maybe if there's will with Council, maybe they can reach out to a Red Rock Global or somebody who is in that space of finding the right party. I mean, you know, or maybe EDC can help with that. I just know his plate's kind of full. We need, we need those jobs that he's, that he's working on. So, but I like the idea. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you.
In that case, I move that we reach out to FCE EDC and Robert Van Gens to give us that report sometime before November.
Okay.
May?
You said May.
I said before November just because I know that we had a comment about-
I would like, I would like May, sir.
Okay. Well, it's your item, so you make the most.
Yeah. Yeah, I did see it already.
So, it's a motion by Councilmember McNair.
Oh, you made it. Okay.
To have some input from FCE EDC prior to May, contingent on their schedule, which we can check with that. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Benevente. All right. All right, Council, look to you for action on that.
Thank you, sir.
Don't be adding no more comments.
All right. Council, moving to item 5.010. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, I'm glad you, I'm sure you guys seen my asking. So, I'm asking, I don't know if you guys know, looked at Fire Station 1, Station 1 on Pershant Street. There's a fire station, there's a playground right beside it. I am proposing that we direct staff to bring in the information on the cost and how it looks to build a playground-
1 or 16? Fire Station 1 or 16?
So, Fire Station 1 has a playground beside it. I'm asking for Fire Station 16, the one that's going to be built on Cedar Creek Road.
Oh, oh.
If staff can bring back information to let me, let us know how the cost and how it'll look to add a playground to Fire Station 16 on Cedar Creek Road. As we know, there's nothing really recreational on that side besides maybe seasonal park, but that is not walkable for those residents on Cedar Creek Road or in Lock Creek area. So, I'm asking for staff to bring us back on May 1st at the next work session. I believe that is the date. Information, May 6, I'm sorry. May 6, bring us back the information and the cost and how much it'd be for a playground to be added to that fire station.
All right. I got, I think I have questions. Councilmember Green, you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Do we, if I'm not mistaken, the original piece of property that was purchased on Fields Road for the fire station originally, was a fire station and a soccer complex or a park or something along those lines?
Sports complex was originally-
Okay, sports complex. Okay.
That's now on MacArthur Road.
Okay, it's now moved to MacArthur Road.
Yeah, when the military stepped in.
The reason I ask this in conjunction with this is I don't want to duplicate something because on the surplus list that Ms. Parker provided, it stated that it was originally purchased for a park and a fire station. So, I want to just make certain that we're not duplicating something there.
Right.
My thought is, I guess it moved with the fire stations. That's what I'm trying to confirm.
The fire station, to take utilities to the fire station from PWC were going to be quite costly down, down Fields Road. The cost of taking it, I think, Mayor, your memory is better than mine, is at least 1.2, 1.3, or higher. It was some crazy amount of money to take utilities down there.
There you go.
Two, okay, but who's counting chief? And so, it was much easier for us and it was better operationally for us to find a piece of land out on Cedar Creek. The only challenge, and we'll be happy to run those numbers, and we'll provide it as an administrative report on the next meeting. I think you said May? We'll get it for you. The only operational issue that when we saw this, that Mr. Gibson, who is not here at the moment, raised was, is that it is on the opposite side of where we have the Population Center. And so, we will give you the information. And armed with that information, then the Council can decide, can either prioritize it somewhere in that area or beside the fire station. I'm not sure yet operationally how much of a laydown we're going to need for the fire station design, but we can definitely come back and give you all the data about the cost. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
All right. So, Councilmember Davis, I guess your item. Your motion is to, you made the motion that you want the staff to analyze the cost of adding that to a project that's already programmed in. Absolutely. All right. Seconded by Councilmember here, discussion. All right, Council, look to you for action.
Yes, May 6th at the next work session.
Okay. All right.
Easy yes because he's affirmative.
Okay. Thank you. You are, yep, 5.012, Mr. Benevente.
Before my time starts, we've got a couple of visitors that are going to speak to this item. So, Ms. Paula, once you restart it, they don't need a presentation. They just need the microphone.
Yeah, it starts when it starts, Councilmember. I mean, but we've had a little discretion for a minute or two here today. Yeah.
So, whenever she starts, I was going to give her, no, this is during 5.012.
Yeah, I know. So, your five minutes, you're going to have them kick it off, right?
I'm going to introduce them.
Okay, cool. All right, sir. Did you want to vote, Councilmember here?
Sir?
We need to vote on you to leave. All right.
Oh, yes, yes.
Hate for you to look like a non-compliant Councilmember.
I'll second.
All right. So, it's much by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilmember Green. Excuse Councilmember here. Any discussion? All right, Council, look to you for your votes for that. Where's Hondros? Did he tip out of here? He's going to be on the non-compliant list. That's all right.
I'm trying to get brownie coins for my-
Okay. All right. See you, Councilmember. All right, these ladies have waited patiently. Ms. Paula, we'll kick it off to you.
Yes. As the speakers get to the microphone, I just want to begin by letting, appointing everyone to the resolution. Our governor, Roy Cooper, has what we call Latino Affairs Council. And they passed a resolution as it relates to different cities around North Carolina, ensuring that we're welcoming of our immigrant communities. I've asked for members of the North Carolina Immigration, Law and Justice Center to come by because one of the items in the resolution that I know that I was talking with other Councilmembers about was the point about supporting local initiatives to provide residents with services. And this group is one such organization that helps provide residents with services who may be undocumented. So, if you guys want to just introduce yourselves and speak about what you guys do here in our community.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Viviana Quiles. I am the Executive Director of North Carolina Immigration, Law and Justice Center, which was known before as Fayetteville Justice for our neighbors. We have renamed our name because we wanted the community to understand what our mission was and what we do in our office. We provide low-income immigration services for people that qualify for these services. I want to present our attorney. She is Avan. So, I'm going to pass the microphone to her.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Attorney Vaughn. And as Viviana said, we provide low-cost or free immigration services for those within the Fayetteville community and surrounding areas. As many of you may not know, navigating the immigration world is kind of daunting. And so, our job is to kind of ease that burden, let these immigrants know, hey, you do have rights. What are my rights? What are my options as it relates to my status and work authorization? And then what about my family? What are their rights as well? And so, it's our job to kind of help them, you know, navigate that system. And then we also educate the community because many don't know that they, these immigrants have rights as well. And so, we do hold forums. We do have sessions where we kind of educate those within Fayetteville and the surrounding areas about the rights of immigrants and here in Fayetteville.
And I really appreciate you all hanging out and being able to share that with us. They're located right over at the Self-Help Building at 100 Hay Street. So, as we all know, you know, members of our community, whether documented or undocumented, are here with us. And, you know, back in the day, whether it was the Greek community who immigrated to this country or many of the other immigrant communities, from my family, side of the family, I'm a first-generation American. My father was born in Peru. My mother was born in Korea. So, you know, I have that unique status as well as a first-generation American whose family immigrated here. And, you know, any concerns about this being part of larger national debates, I don't think is, aren't necessarily relevant if you read the language here. We're very specific about saying, you know, what we're communicating to our citizens about how welcoming this community is and how there are services available for you to work on your immigration status if that's, if that's an issue. So, my hope is that Representative Hurtado at the State House can come and receive this resolution at a future occasion, potentially during Latino History Month. And, you know, this was be just a positive effort for all of us here in the city of Fayetteville. And I'll stop there.
All right. Council, any other questions, comments? Councilmember Benevente, you know, you and I kind of talked about this and thank you for being patient, ladies, for as we worked through this five, six-hour trial here. But, you know, I know that as he and I talked, you know, sometimes the politics turns something that's very practical into an argument. And, you know, I just want to be careful that the Council doesn't get involved in a national issue like this. And I'm sure that's not the intent of the resolution. So, there were some things in here that I spoke with him about. And just from your standpoint, the resolution, what's the purpose of it? What is it going to help you accomplish that you can't currently accomplish?
So, even right now, when I talk with immigrant communities, they're not super familiar or confident in calling 911 sometimes. They'll see things happening in their neighborhood. They'll want to reach out to law enforcement and their concern is that, well, I'm not allowed to use that service, which isn't true. In fact, you know, they want to be able to tip off, you know, if there's a drug house in the neighborhood or maybe they're experiencing some kind of incident themselves. And they should feel confident in reaching out to, you know, city services in that way. So, this is just a reminder that if you're here in this community, these are sort of resources that you ought to take advantage of and to include services like legal immigration help so that we can make sure that everyone in our community is, you know, able to access everything that they deserve. So, you know, this isn't about sanctuary cities. This isn't about immigration crisis at the border. This is about what our city is doing for what we can do to make sure that we're a welcoming community and supportive of people that right now, the state Latino Affairs Council has said maybe isn't clear. And we could make an effort here at the municipal level to improve on that messaging.
So, just last, just last question on it. So, I know before there, it was some larger discussions about sanctuary city and we see how that's turning out.
And this isn't that.
Yeah, I got you. But so, the resolutions that we do during Hispanic Month and the resolutions that we do during, you know, come off of inclusivity, but the resolutions that we do then don't accomplish that? Because I think the language in there says that.
Well, for what it's worth, we're being informed by the Governor's Council on this matter. So, it's almost like they've sort of worked on it and said, maybe this is what a broader audience from all over the state is sort of all behind together.
All right. Council, any other questions, comments for Councilmember Davis?
Yeah. So, I'm looking at the resolution that was drafted and I just have a few questions about the resolution that's already drafted. In reference to, it says support, let me make sure I read it correctly. It says empowers and encourages law enforcement office officials to intentionally foster trust and cooperation with our diverse immigrant communities. What is, what exactly does that say?
So, just like as I mentioned, you know, there are certain members of our community who are undocumented. And their interaction with law enforcement maybe comes from a place of, well, I'm not trying to get in trouble for something. But if they're in a situation where they're seeing violent crime happening, they're seeing drug transactions occurring, that they should feel encouraged to call 911 and to let the police know about a situation. So, I think that's the basis of that because we've known that that to be an issue locally and with other immigrant communities who don't realize that you're better off just reaching out for assistance rather than just looking the other way.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm just going to say it and say it out. I also am first-generation. Councilmember Hondros is first-generation. I cannot, the way this is, I just cannot support this right now, the way it is presented. Nothing against anything. I just feel it's more, it's a little bit too political for me. And I just, I really feel that it's not, and I always say this, it's not my lane. You know, as I sit in this chair, my lane is the city of Fayetteville. And if anybody knows the hardships of immigrants, I can- Um, and if anybody knows the hardships of immigrants, I can honestly say, my family lived it, I grew up in it, I know that there is, but there is help out there, and I think that there is a lot of ways that we can let people know that they can call 911. So, um, thank you.
Well, and for what it's worth, you know, our immigrant communities are, they're, they're here right now, like, they're in our city, so this isn't an issue that is not, um, that Fayetteville is, is separate and apart from. Um, so I think, you know, showcasing just, um, you know, um, support in this way, I think is a very low bar. Doesn't require much from us.
All right, so Councilmember Benevente, you got your three minutes back?
I did.
Over your time? All right, so, uh, motion?
Uh, I move that we adopt the resolution.
All right, is there a second to that? Second by Councilmember McNair? All right, discussion, you've had? All right, council, look to you for your votes. What's going on on the screen, y'all?
You be my, you be my tiebreaker, man. It'll be 4-4, otherwise.
Screen stuck. So, Ms. Paula, you want to reset the board?
Dino is my fifth, so like, I need your support.
All right, raise your hands, uh, those in favor. So, one, two, three, all right. All right, council, and, uh, that's Benevente, Banks McGlaughlin, and McNair. All right, good meeting, council. All right, council, motion adjourned? All right.
I think the battery's just dead.
Shit, I don't know how to go home right here, do you?
This is it. I said, as always. I said, as always. I bet you talked about first, I knew you were talking about me.
Hold on, don't look away, I'm going to walk with you.